I do.
You're.
Don't be the mayor today.
Called millions order with a prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning with praise and thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here at City Hall pertaining to all of the the business at hand. We ask you to give us wisdom beyond any experience and knowledge that we would have, Lord, concerning all things. We also want to pray for all the people and all the families that's been affected by the tragedy of the floods and loss of lives and children's lives and and people who have lost their possessions, Lord. We just lift them all up unto you and ask you to bless them and the first responders and law enforcement and all that are that are working in that area to bless them. And we thank you again for all your blessings in our lives. And we give you praise in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have we got any recognizing visitor? We got any comments?
I gave it to you. I gave it to you on Friday when we met. What's the mayor's agenda? Yeah, I gave it to her on Friday.
No, no comment? Anybody?
Um, yeah, sure. Just want to just let everyone know that the Freedom of Crockett, I really enjoyed that. It kind of pulled off. Even though it kind of rained a little bit, but I think it turned out well overall. So I think we just need to get an earlier start. But I appreciate all of the sponsors. They did a really good job. I know HEB, I don't want to start calling out a lot of names, but because I may miss somebody. But we just appreciate them sponsoring that event for the community, so.
You mean like an earlier start for planning?
Yes, planning, yes. Planning.
Next year is two hundred and fifty, the year anniversary as well, so.
Yes, yeah. Sponsor, sponsorship.
Because I know that the start of the fireworks itself was due to the weather. We still had it not as good. It was a good show, really good show.
Yeah, I'm just saying, just planning.
Planning.
Oh, yes.
Okay, uh, we'll get approval of minutes regular session June sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Motion?
I'll get a motion to approve the minutes of June sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
I second.
Been a motion and second, all approved? Item number two, considering approval in a local agreement between the City of Crockett and Grapevine Independent School District for the conveyance and welding stations, of welding stations?
Mayor and council, we talked about this a couple of months ago and did reach out to Crockett ISD, asked them if they were still interested or if they were interested at all welding machines or booths, welding booths. And they've just undergone a lot of renovations and work on their place. And they said they had no need for them and or space for the welding booth. And they didn't need any welding welders, so one of the, one of the guys that works out at the Crockett ISD had actually transferred to Grapevine. ISD was hired as ag teacher for Grapevine ISD. And he said they have a lot of needs up there for welding booths. They do have welders. They don't need the welders, but they needed, they could definitely use the welding booths. And so we reached out to the school district and got their approval on their end for the interlocal agreement to transfer six welding stations. There's, they're double units, so there's actually twelve in total, six units.
Is that all of them?
Yes.
So I had to get it out of the way?
That, I guess those, the contractors that are working out there at the Provalis Building have already disconnected them all, all the electricity and everything. They had, this, this past week, they had ag. Convention, the FFA convention. And so this week, hopefully, when they're back in town, they're going to bring some trailers and stuff and will help load them up and get it transferred up there so they can connect them.
So what, so Grapevine has a welding course, welding class that they're offering?
They have, they have an ag program for.
So they're implementing welding in their ag program or?
I would expect, yes, ma'am. But they said they could definitely use them. So just make a recommendation that we do this interlocal agreement to get the property transferred. And their board president has already signed off on it.
Do we need a motion? Well, I'll make a motion. We approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Crockett and Grapevine Independent School District for the conveyance of the welding stations.
I second.
With a motion and second, all in favor?
Yeah, if we just approve the resolution as presented in the.
Okay, I want to, okay, rule number three, consider and approve a resolution as described in for the city and the encore.
Mayor and council, this is a lengthy header for this resolution. However, just in short, this resolution allows us to procure the services under the AOC, this Alliance of Encore Cities, to represent the city as well as other cities in Encore distribution areas to they're, they're going through the PUC process of increasing their rates. And on average, this rate increase to the City of Crockett resident or business, it's a distribution rate increase, so it's about seven dollars increase a month for their rate fees. And so we have, under the AOC, and there's an alliance of Encore Cities, the City of Corsa Cana heads up an alliance. And they have a special counsel that attends the PUC hearings and works with Encore to try to negotiate and lower that rate increase or provide, you know, sufficient enough justification that before the PUC, they can follow through with that rate increase. But hopefully, it results in, in some kind of a middle ground to that rate increase. But they would represent the City of Crockett as well as other cities that enter this alliance. Under the PUC rules, we don't pay for this representation. Encore is required to cover the cost of legal representation of the cities that require a PUC hearing and rate justification.
What's show?
So basically, I see the law firm now that we will be hiring the Herrera Law and Associates?
The firm that the AOC has hired is, yes, yes, ma'am, is Herrera Law and Associates. And they, they specialize in special counsel for PUC, PUC hearing. PUC being the Public Utilities Commission.
Well, I'm, I'm reading all this and I'm just trying to figure out how to frame them. A motion.
So essentially, one other thing that I mentioned, they, so Encore, when they sent the notice out, they sent a folder about that thick, about five thousand pages, it's a thick volume. That's why we need representation. And I was just looking here at the package of data that they sent. As far as the, the motion, it would just be to move to approve the resolution between the, by the City of Crockett suspending Encore's rate increase. And ultimately, what it would do would allow us to enter the AOC alliance and hire special counsel. But all we need is a motion to approve this resolution.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
I second.
And a motion and a second, all in favor?
Okay, number four, consider and approve an extension thirty day cure period for Lincoln Lumber tax abatement and incentives agreement.
Mayor and council, I presented, I sent yesterday, or last week, I sent the, a letter from Lincoln Lumber. We issued them a notice of default after their closure out at the, their Crockett site, their Lincoln Lumber Crockett site. They have come, since come back and asked to meet with council and the Commissioners Court to discuss some other items within this. They're not, they're not arguing that they are in default and that they are closing. And the abatement agreement and incentives agreement that we provided them, there's performance clauses in it where they have to repay us for tax abatements provided and incentives provided. However, they have some additional information that they would like to present to the, to the board, both council and Commissioners Court. And they're asking for, well, I'm asking actually for a thirty day extension to allow us to sit down and meet with them and to discuss what they wish to provide to the city, the details that they would like to provide. They feel in a lot of ways, they've actually surpassed or exceeded the initial requirements of our abatement agreement. However, the term, they, they're not currently in operation, and so due to that, they are in default. So that being said, in order for me not to make any argument for or against them, I would like them to present to council and to our, our legal counsel and for a decision to be made on what, if any concessions needed to be made on what they are due back to, what, you know, the taxes and the incentives that are due back to the city. So I would like to meet with them at a meeting.
So there's, in the original contract or agreement, there's not a stipulation that addresses this situation that occurred?
Yes, sir, there is. There's performance, the performance clauses or the clawbacks in the agreement addresses what they owe back to the city if they do not complete their performance.
So they're, they're challenging that?
No, not, not really. They didn't say that they are challenging it. They wish to present more information and hope that council can come to a, a resolution along with them. So I'm sure that they're asking for some type of forgiveness since they, they feel that they've over or exceeded the agreement in some ways. So that being said, I, I can't make an argument for them. They're going to have to present that argument or that additional information to council. And then y'all decide how to proceed.
I mean legally, legally can we? I mean, being a contract, legally can we, as taxpayers' money, I mean. But it should be amended before, before the default. Not after, really.
I guess, but what they're asking for is additional time to cure, so you'd never ask for that prior to default. You'd always ask for that after.
That's all they're asking for now, is just additional time.
They're saying, you know, don't go to some default yet, because the contract allows for a cure time. They have time to cure it. They want additional time to cure it. And I think they have an argument as to how they can do that and how they've exceeded the expectation in other areas.
But in, but in exceeding the expectation, they, they exceeded in, in, in their revenue as well.
Sure.
Well, I would like to know when, when did we find out that, that they were closing?
I don't have the dates. I mean, after I was provided notice.
When did they provide you notice?
Like I said, I don't have the dates in front of me right now, but after they provided me notice, I sent them, I prepared a notice of default and sent that to them. And then they've come back with, with this. And like I say, in order to not get ahead of ourselves, I don't even know what they're going to be asking for.
Okay.
So I'm not, so I don't want us to talk, they, they may not even be asking for specifically on the financial side. They're also, like I said, when I went out there to meet them, they were meeting with another business to move in also. And then they were also talking about a couple of other options to where they could continue operating out there. So there's several things that they want to present. And that being said, I would like them to present to, to, to council and to the Commissioners Court what it is they have in mind.
So, so back to square one, we just need a, an extent, a thirty day extension?
That's what I'm asking for, is thirty days to allow council and them to and let them make their presentation to the board.
So with this, I mean, doing what you're suggesting, is this setting precedence for other businesses that come in? I mean.
Potentially, depending on what it is they're asking, I don't know. Not, not the.
I mean, in other words, every, every business that come in and, and leave or decide they want to leave our city, are they going to come and ask us for forgiveness because they did above and beyond the contract? So basically, what they did was they honored the contract that we, we agreed upon. Now, the above and beyond, maybe they needed that to, for their business.
Sure. That was their business, business decision.
Right, for their business. So it's what, what they didn't include us. So I personally, I mean, we can, you know, discuss it further, but I'm just worried about us setting precedents for other businesses. Because.
Well, we'd have to be careful of that, that we didn't set a precedent.
We've already set one. Basically, I mean, if we do that, I mean, we got to make sure that if we, if we, I mean, I don't know what.
If we do our cure time?
No, 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 no. When we go in and talk with them, see what they're asking us extra to do, that I'm assuming that they're going to ask.
But right now, we just, the thirty day cure period that, that you're asking for, I mean, that's, that doesn't settle anything. That just opens up the discussion.
Allows us time to meet with.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and it would come back to us.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the extension of the thirty day cure period for Lincoln Lumber tax abatement.
Got a motion?
I second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, I guess we go into our fiscal year.
Thank you, council. Mayor and council, we, we, sorry for that. We added those additional items that had, that were under some time, time crunch. So we added that to our special meeting today. That way, we wouldn't have to have another, a secondary meeting this afternoon. So we address it all during our special meeting this morning. Mayor and council, a lot of this is going to, this is on each one of y'all to help lead in, lead in guide and provide recommendations of Burt's budget workshop and his intent is to allow us to present to council needs that are ongoing in the city that are not being addressed in our current year's budget. And that allows us to present these to council. Council has the ability to request more information if you, if you don't have enough information or provide recommendations, maybe something that we even hadn't thought about or, you know, some type of a middle ground between what we're asking for and what's, what's reasonable. So that being said, I'll start off with just a few talking points, a few budget points just to lay the ground about any of these items that require additional funding, where that funding comes from. And for y'all to formalize in y'all's mind, as y'all's hear, as you hear these needs, prioritize what is, you can put it any way you want, but what is really, really needed? What is needed? What can be put off or what can be changed in, 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 in how it can be better funded? So at any point, if you can stop, ask more questions, the initial points that I'm going to be talking about, I'm using draft numbers from the appraisal district and using some of our last year's numbers that are not out yet for this year. So a lot of it is, we're in the middle of, of having to prepare for next year without knowing all of next year's specifics. A lot of it is projections using the last few years' worth of data. And are we, are we trending upwards? Are we trending downwards? And things of that nature.
Kind of with, with the budget, I'm at the point to where I really don't know I guess the debt to revenue ratio, so, so.
If we have that broken down in our current budget, I don't have it for, once we prepare next year's budget, then I'll, I'll, I'll present that to you. This year, this year, it's in your budget books, the debt to revenue and the debt per capita and as well as our M and O and INS, which is our debt and our operations expenditure breakdown. It's in the back of your budget books. That look like this here, the, our annual budget books, this is for this year.
Let me see.
All right. So here's just some of my projections. Using last year's revenue to date and looking forward, I don't feel comfortable to project any significant sales tax rate increases. I don't feel like we're on a downward trend, but we're also in the middle of, of global, global issues, local issues within our, within our country and locally, that anything could change that project, projection. So sales tax is healthy, but I don't believe it's to the point to where we can build in additional expenditures for next year that then we have to go and amend our budget, because I, I come back to you guys and say that sales tax is down. And so far, we haven't had to do that. Franchise revenue, that's electrical, gas, cable, TV, telephone, all of our franchise revenues. Since I've been here, have, have decreased pretty much every year. That's on a downward trend. Think a lot of it has things moved towards online. As things move towards more efficiencies, like say electricity, LEDs change outs and things become more and more efficient and solar panel popping up on roofs and different things like that. Slowly, that has decreased. Cable, everything's streaming. A lot of the streaming services do not pay franchise fees or they're conglomerated into another service like Northland or Vibe Cable. So a lot of those that historically have funded cities for, for them to go out and use our right of ways, they no longer use our right of ways in a lot of ways. Cell phones, you know, those don't use our right of ways and they don't pay franchise fees. So a lot of the things that we took for granted for bringing in revenue year over year are going away. And they're not being replaced with new sources of revenue.
What do you think the percentage decreased, just say annually for the last couple of years? I mean, do you have?
Overall, probably, I, I've been building in roughly five percent decreases each and every year. This, for instance, this last year, our, our electrical franchise, I budgeted, I believe it was two nine, two hundred and ninety thousand and we're, we, we got about two hundred and eighty thousand. So it's each and every year, it decreases just a little.
And it's been showing that annually, yeah.
So what, what are those numbers?
In the budget.
In our budget, but?
Yes.
So, so what, what, what do you think would be safe? I know, I know that's just projecting, I mean.
Well, continue, yes. So, so, so far, what we've seen has held true pretty much every year. So we've kept that in the budget by decreasing it around five percent. So I feel like this safe continuing that, you know, continuing about a five percent decrease. All of that together, you know, adds up to around four hundred thousand dollars when you're talking about all of our franchise revenue. And so that's not a huge, huge impact, but it's a significant portion of our budget and it's on a, on a downward trend. Property tax revenue. Last year, we, what we voted on last year was a no new revenue rate. So we decreased our, our, our property tax rate from sixty eight cents to sixty three cents. Now, we, we did a, a decrease in our rate to match the increases in property valuations. So as people's properties were evaluated more, if we would have kept the same tax rate, we would have made more money as far as the city and county and stuff like that. We decreased ourselves, our, our property tax rate to not bring in any more money than the previous year. This year, we've been fortunate, we've seen additional, a lot of it hasn't hit the books yet or the tax codes yet, but we've seen in properties that were not part of any kind of incentives or agreements, we've seen a little over five billion dollars in additional property evaluations of new construction. So we don't get penalized for new construction. When new construction happens, that's good. That's, that's the only real healthy increase, not us trying to figure out people's current values and bump them up and change them like that. New properties, we can take full advantage of that. That's good for the city. That, if we adopted a no new revenue rate this year as well, for everybody else that's paying taxes current, you know, from last year, their rates do not, their, their, the dollars that they pay in and taxes do not increase. So it would require us to lower our tax rate again if we adopt a no new revenue rate. But it would still bring in about around thirty thousand dollars of new money because of the new construction. The voter approval rate stands to add three and a half percent over last year's revenue. So the amount of revenue that we brought in last year, about two point four million dollars, if you subtract, two point four million dollars is what we bring in in property taxes. If, if you subtract the debt out of that, we end up with about one point nine million dollars of money that helps fund police, fire, streets, parks, library, city hall, everything outside of water and sewer. The water sewer departments have a separate fund that pays for those.
That's if we raise them?
If we raise it to three point five, that's the voter approval tax rate. That's the amount that we're allowed to go up to, the three point five percent of additional money to not trigger an election. If we go over that amount, it's not immediate, but the citizens can petition for an election. If they feel like it's not justified or there's just, we, that it's just too much, then they can petition, I believe it's three percent of the registered voters, can put a petition together and make it go onto the November ballot. Whether that holds true, if the, if the election passes, then we can keep whatever rate council decides to keep. Or it will bump, it will bump us back down to this voter approval rate, that three point five percent. Let's say we decided to go up five percent and the election overwhelmingly denies that. Let's say we decided to go up five percent and the election overwhelmingly denies that. Then it will kick it back to the voter approval rate, which will only bring in about sixty nine thousand of additional money. So if you add those two together, right at a hundred, was that a hundred and two, right at a hundred and two thousand is the only amount of new money that we can appropriate without triggering a potential election. That's the only amount of new money that can come into the city to help fund all of our needs that we're dealing with today.
About thirty thousand dollars.
For the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate, which is the max allowed without triggering a, a, a potential election. That's a total of a hundred thousand. Thirty thousand is the amount that we can bring in without increasing taxes. Basically lowering our tax rate. So that's just a, you know.
Sir?
Well, I was on the taxes, you know, I mean, don't get me wrong, I know we need taxes to make the city and help the city out. But it's, it's not, it's a lot of people that's struggling down here still, without, without the jobs and stuff. So until we start getting jobs coming in where people could pay their taxes, I'm not talking about everybody because I know a lot of people can't pay their taxes, but I know a lot of people that can't pay their taxes right now, why it's like that. So when we talking about taxes and stuff, I gotta think about my people that can't pay the taxes right now, you know?
Yes, sir.
I would love, I would love to see Crockett growing where we can raise the taxes and everybody can. But I'm not really with people losing their properties behind property taxes just because, you know. That's just me.
Also, one thing I see too with raising property taxes is that you have a lot of retirees that are here, in this city. Everything's going up, but their check is not. So I think we need to consider those elderly people, those people that are retired, I think we need to consider them as well.
For sure. The majority of that is all capped by exemptions. You have sixty five and older exemptions and or homestead exemptions. So it does not hit, for the most part, it does not hit those taxpayers.
Which ones?
The sixty five and older.
Okay, but those retired?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Everybody's not sixty five, that's retired?
Right, I understand, but what I'm saying, I clarified that by saying sixty five and older are provided homestead exemptions. And theirs are capped. So most of it falls to, you know, and probably most of the crowd, so is the one that was to do.
I'm gonna speak on retirement.
I agree.
I have.
That hasn't met the sixty five.
That has, I met the sixty five and checks my changes.
Yeah, so garbage rates, we just gone through that. To clarify, there's no expected increases on garbage rates and, and our, and our contractor is not requesting a garbage rate increase. Water rates, we have received two percent request or not really request, but notification that our water rates are going up by two percent. I don't have all the dollar numbers on that. I have to run projections on water rates first and build that two percent in. But it'll be a slight, just to remind y'all, last year, they can't take it away what we don't use. We're under tax, we're under take or pay. We're under take or pay, so the part that we don't use, we still pay for. Water. Water rates last year went up as well, but we did not pass it on to the residents. We, we absorbed the rate increase in our budget. Just, these are just talking points, these are just to recol, to, to remind y'all of last year and this year. So going forward, for every cent that we charge, we bring in about forty two thousand dollars in revenue and, and new money for every one cent increase in our tax rate. That equals, that one cent increase equals about nine dollars and forty cents for the average home value in Crockett. So when we're talking about the need for, hey, we really need to get this funded. Let's, this is a priority, let's find money for this. That's about what it boils down to, just in rough numbers.
About eighty cents a month.
Correct. For every forty two thousand dollars in, in revenue, it's nine dollars and forty cents a year for the, for the average home value. What were you talking, average home, what's your average home? Ninety eight thousand. Or ninety four, uh, ninety four thousand. So you got a five hundred thousand dollar home, that's gonna be what? Five times that. Huh? Five times that, yeah. About fifty thousand, oh fifty dollars a year.
On that note, let me ask you a question real quick. So, and I guess I have not got clarity on, you got the property tax rate. I have not got clarity on the monies from the economic development covering some of the property tax. So we need to get clarity on it. I think a lot of people are still having questions and I do, because I like to know how those funds or those monies are gonna cover property taxes. And if it's allowed.
Those debts haven't been served yet though.
So that money, what I'm doing is working with, I'm, I'm working with our bookkeeper to, two things are gonna have to happen on the EDC side of that sales tax that's coming in. One, we're gonna have to amend our budget, our EDC budget, due to all the expenses that were built into that budget when it was approved versus current day expenses. And current day expenses were specified in our wind down resolution that it could go, only go, EDC money could only go towards these items. And so we're gonna have to amend our budget for the EDC sales tax to address this year. As well as the next few years of budgets are going to be allocated specific expenditures for each of those allowable items. The biggest one is pay off the debt for the provalence fund for the vote tech center.
So legally, can we make changes? My understanding is that when we went to, when we voted in November and, and EDC was no longer, crocked economic development is no longer. My understanding that there were no changes or we couldn't use those funds for anything else but what it was for at that time.
Correct.
So how are we using any of these funds for?
Because those, the only thing that we're currently using them for, or it can be used for in, even in the future, are only for items that were already obligated at that time. So that's the, that's, you're, you're right, it's still the case. We can't come up with, hey, that'd be a good project for EDC funds, we can't do that anymore, it's done. And so it can only.
We've been doing it, right?
No, we're already voted on ahead of time.
No, ma'am.
But another thing too, even a lot of things that we voted on ahead of time, like the phase build out and stuff like that.
The vote tech center?
Yeah, vote tech center, phase build out, we never got any numbers. All, all we said was that phase.
Yes, ma'am.
So when did we get those numbers?
We built the budget number in.
When, 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 when?
Into the wind downs resolution that y'all approved.
Six hundred and forty thousand.
I don't think it was even that much, I think it was five hundred and fifty or something.
Okay, so is that what, oh, five hundred and fifty, so.
So all of that money that was allocated then in the wind down resolution is, is the only amount of money that we can use towards finalizing any on the book projects. No more new projects. So once those projects are completed, then that money, right now, it's around seven hundred and fifty thousand a year. About three quarters of a million dollars a year in sales tax from that, that half cent sales tax. Then that money will be, right now, our, our, our sales taxes brings in around one point nine, right, two million dollars. And not our sales tax, our property taxes. Right, I just spoke of it, yeah. We're bringing in that, that two million, that seven hundred and fifty thousand from the sales tax is going to be plugged in there. And then we only have to bring in property taxes for the remaining amount over and above that seven hundred and fifty thousand. So somewhere around thirty, forty percent of our sales tax or our property taxes will be funded by that sales tax.
Well, American Development.
Yes, ma'am. At this point, it will be, it'll be called a, a property tax reduction tax, sales tax for property tax relief.
So did we, we talk to the, the state comptroller's office or?
Yes, ma'am.
We, we already spoke with someone there?
Our attorneys have, yes, ma'am. Everything's been addressed through our attorneys.
Okay, what attorneys?
Our special counsel, DNR, BZ.
Okay, we have any paperwork, anything?
Yes, ma'am. So.
DNR, okay, which is Dan.
Are we still in a lot of debt with that building though, huh?
Yeah, about two million. So just that alone, just that sales tax, that, that revenue alone of around seven hundred and fifty thousand has to pay off about two million. So we know that's around two and a half years just for the, that debt alone.
So with that debt, then, so with that debt of the building and then the build out.
Correct. So this gives you, this gives you an idea of where this money comes from when we're talking about, when we're talking about our needs. Are there any, like I said, this is a high, just a high level refresher on that. So I would like to move into, is there any questions on that? So next we'll move into our capital request. One point that I want to make before we move into that, there's two types of expenditures. There's an appropriation expenditure that whenever we, whenever we approve a continuous expense personnel, it's not a one-time expense. Capital requests that are a one-time in nature. If I can come up with funding for that one-time expense, we may not have to build it into our tax rate if it's a one-time expense. Hey, we have some additional reserves here. Some of the things that we're gonna present back is I'm gonna, in a, in our subsequent, in a subsequent meeting, I'm gonna bring back to council what, how much money we have left in our ARPA fund. Uh, we have to expand that, I believe, by the end of twenty twenty six. So we have a little bit of money left there. And so that's a little bit different than costs that are year over year. Because I may be able to put a little bit of money that we have in hand now towards that. But then that goes away and it's gonna have to come out of our tax, out of our, out of our revenue for future years. So cost of living adjustments, that's from now on. New personnel, that's from now on, new programs. That's for now and, and moving into the future, we have to come up with that money each and every year. So.
Would you explain those ARPA funds, please? What they're, what they're actually, what, what they, what, what ARPA stands for and what, what they're using?
American Rescue Plan Act is what the ARPA, it was coronavirus relief fund. It, it was a legislation that was enacted with a, with a COVID relief. Some monies that were allocated to cities and counties throughout the US. And we've used that money in the past to purchase police vehicles, to repair, to purchase the animal shelter and repair it, to get it up and functional. We've used it for items like that, one-time purchasing items. We've used it for the pavilion at IT Williams Park. We use it to fix the pavilion in the big park or to paint it, sandblast it, paint it, things of that nature. The signs, the gateway signs, that'll be funded from that amount. So basically, some of the, some of the items that council has already allocated out of that fund, I need to subtract the ones that are currently still in the works, such as the gateway signs and the other one was the fire station. We've been working, trying to get her, to work in without having to, being able to use the previous engineer drawings on that building without having to involve engineers again and find someone to provide a, a, an estimate on busting that concrete slab out at the fire station that's, that's falling apart where the trucks are parked. We allocated some money for that. So there's a couple items that still need to come out of that fund. So I would like to bring a, a total to y'all of, of unallocated amounts that are left. And we can use requests that are made today and, and y'all can allocate some of those funds towards them.
With, my, my question is, with those funds, we could have repaired streets and infrastructure with that as well?
Anything that the city does, it could have been used towards, yes, ma'am.
Did we not think about prioritizing our city streets and infrastructure?
Yes, ma'am, we did. We actually use a lot of those funds to purchase equipment. Like I said, you have one-time expenses to use that money towards, to fix one street. We have two hundred streets. So what we used is some of that money to purchase equipment to where we could continue fixing those streets year over year. That money would immediately be sapped up by one project probably, you know? So, but we did think about that, but that's, it was ultimately council's decision about what was the priorities. So.
And that was, and the streets were suggested as one of the priorities?
They always are, that's, that's the hot topic that we're always trying to find funding for.
So we can consider that this time, okay.
Okay, um, would, would you like to start? Give me a, give me a little break?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I know that I've talked to y'all already, we've had meetings, so don't let my pack terrify you. I know it's, it's big and it, it'll tell a lot of money, so. I'll kind of just go through these and then if y'all have questions, we can go with questions or if y'all want me to give them time to keep niggling on, I could with whatever y'all choose. But we'll start out with the expansion of the police department or new construction. Those of you that were able to come over, I'll walk y'all through the, the office and kind of talk to y'all about some of the issues that we were facing. One of my long-term plans when I became chief was to build a new station because when this police department was built and finished, they had already outgrown it. But they had to work with what they had at the time and I understand that. One of our biggest issues right now that we're facing with our current facility is our property inventory. Extremely small, it lacked adequate ventilation and adequate storage. We're required to keep certain specific evidence items separate from one another and to have proper processing stations. We just don't have the room there. We've looked at different ways to, to try to make that happen with what we have, but ultimately, at the very end, it also cannot be on an exterior wall, which is what we face now. That building's set up the way it is, there's literally no possible way to have an evidence or property room that's not on an exterior wall. Someone may ask, well, who, who oversees that? Who manages that? There's no particular agency that specifically manages that other than our ethical commitment and loyal value of presenting solid cases and solid evidence to the course. Now going forward, y'all, I hear we talk about the state is making a lot of changes. T. Cole is starting to become more involved in law enforcement agencies. And one of their big pushes within the next three years, they're gonna require all law enforcement agencies or the municipality police department to become accredited. Accreditation is not necessarily a bad thing. They would come in and audit us, make sure that our policies are up to date, that we're managing the, the police department the way we should. And we would be opted on that every so many years. One of their requirements in that accreditation is the evidence room or proper evidence management. Now, I want to be clear, the evidence room we have now and the process we use, our property officer is doing the great job. They can go in anytime they need to and find any piece of evidence that, that needs to be found or recorded. Space is a big issue and ventilation is even worse. So if y'all have even been step foot in the police department. Space is a big issue and ventilation is even worse. So if y'all have even been step foot in the police department, you can smell the odor as soon as you walk in the door. And that's, that's always not a, a fun and healthy thing. Beyond just the evidence room, uh, space is extremely limited. Uh, we have no formal interview room with interviewing equipment. Uh, we have no space to bring, uh, witnesses or victims in with, where they can sit down and talk to officers without tons of people or, just because of the way that facility is set up. Uh, storage is also an issue when it comes to storing files and maintaining files that will require to keep for retention periods. So, uh, those are some of the things, um, as far as some of the issues that we have. We've looked at two different, two different things, uh, expanding the police department outback, adding about another fourteen to fifteen hundred square foot. That's, that's kind of a, a fix for now, that would fix our property room issue, that would give us a little additional space. Essentially, we can make that work. There would be some, some headaches with that, uh, talking with the contractor, some of the things he would have to do. And he roughly estimated that, uh, to cost around, he said between six hundred and thirty and eight hundred thousand dollars. In that conversation, we spoke about, uh, new construction from the ground up at the location and maybe the city already owns the property. And he estimated roughly a five thousand square foot building, uh, constructed the way it needs to be constructed at around one point five million. So I put both of these options in there so we can talk about going forward and what do we want to do. Do we want to spend between six and eight hundred thousand on, I mean, uh, basically a remodel and an add-on? Or do we want to spend more money, um, and think about twenty years down the road, twenty-five years down the road for the people that come after us? And that's, that's something that I want to work with y'all and determine the best, the best fit for the city. And with that, we're not, we're not against a pre-existing structure. There's a structure somewhere in the city that, that we feel like could be cost-effective, uh, to, to purchase and to renovate into a police department. I am open to that too. My biggest focus right now is adding some additional space and getting our property room up, uh, to where it's, to where it needs to be. That's one of the most important areas, uh, that we deal with. My thought on, on funding this, I know that's, it's a lot of money. I worked a little bit with you for a minute now, we kind of talked about, uh, the funding side of this. Um, I think we both agree that we'd take some type of tax note on the extended multi-year payment plan to fund something like this. Put some breakdowns in, in the packet, kind of show you property values, um, all the way down to five hundred thousand. What a twenty-year, fifteen-year, uh, ten-year note would cost, uh, the taxpayer per year. Kind of gives you an idea of what each taxpayer will look at if this is something that, that y'all chose to go with. I also think that if, uh, if it's a situation that council is not comfortable saying, hey, we're gonna authorize this, we're gonna put this on the taxpayer. Um, I ask that we consider putting it before the vote. Uh, let the taxpayer speak and say, yes, we support this, or no, we don't. Uh, but I think we have to do our due diligence and try and fix some of these issues. The overall issue, and, and this is, none of y'all are responsible for this. Years past, as we went, things have been ignored. Pay sales, vehicles, facilities, it's been ignored over the years. Where you get to a point where you're spending two million dollars, a million and a half. And that's what I'm trying to prevent is we're going forward to not get to that point. Let's address a little bit of it as much as we can, so as we go forward, we're not looking at everything all at one time. You'll see next in the packet, I included mobile and portable radios. I included those with, right after the, uh, facility plan because I feel like this is something that we could include on a tax note. You'll see three different options, uh, three different quotes in there. Uh, the first quote is Motorola, obviously that would be, uh, something, that would be my preference. But they're considered as more expensive than, than some of the other options that, uh, that I've included. I have included a hi- higher wattage radio and a radio that's seven, eight hundred compatible. At some point in the future, uh, we'll be moving to seven, eight hundred. And again, that's a situation that ultimately we're gonna have to face. We may not have to face it right now in regards to using the seven, eight hundred system, but we also have to face the fact that our current radios are twenty-five plus years old and they're starting to go down. So, uh, my idea of this is we purchase these radios that currently work for what we need. Plus, in the future, when we go seven, eight hundred, they will work for that with a software, a software change with a flip of the switch. So we're not shelling out two, three hundred thousand dollars, uh, multiple times. I think these radios would be adequate, uh, for us now and then, then in the future. Our next one is always a hot topic and that is pay increase. Two and a half years ago, uh, council voted to significantly increase, um, the salary, which has been a huge factor in our retention. We're currently staffed and I believe for the first time in about eight years, our agency has been fully staffed, uh, for consecutive years. That's large in part to the city, uh, increasing the salary pay scale. The unfortunate thing, uh, when we made that increase, uh, when it went into effect, within six months later, agencies around us increased another ten to twenty percent. So where we leveled up a little bit with them, within six months, they went up again. I understand some of these agencies may have more income, may have more tax base. But I, as your chief, I have to bring it to you, uh, because at the end of the day, employees still expect, uh, good pay, uh, pay that they can live on, they can buy a house on, they can raise a family on. And my fear, if we don't stay competitive, uh, we're gonna be looking at a situation where we start losing officers again. When your salary skill is not competitive with other agencies, it's very tough for retainment and recruitment because you're fighting battles at the police academy and saying, hey, come to work for Crockett. We've got a great department, we've got a great city government, we've got a great city. And they look at your pay scale and then they look over at Huntsville or Walker County and they're like, chief, I appreciate it, but I'm headed over there. I know it's tough to compete with, with larger agencies, Huntsville, Luckin, Tyler, but I think we have to try to meet in the middle somewhere, uh, to, to stay competitive and to really retain the staff we have. I hope that, uh, as long as I'm here, we keep the staff we have. We've got a great department and a great group of officers. And I really want to retain the ones we have because they, they really do a good job. And if it comes to a situation of having to recruit other officers, I will be, uh, competitive in recruiting good officers. So in this, I've included a five, ten, fifteen percent, um, option, uh, on the pay scale. You can see hourly and clearly what, what that increase would be and what that, uh, what those numbers would be. I'm just asking that you look at it and if there's a way possible to, to address. And I, I said up to fifteen percent. That doesn't mean that you all can't come up with something else, but I think if, as long as we continue to address our pay scale each year, we will not get into a situation where one day we're looking at it and we have to go up thirty-five percent because we're so far behind. You'll see in, included in that, um, officer proficiency pay. Two and a half years ago, when we got that pay raise, the officer gave up their incentive pay, their certificate pay. Uh, we revamped this proficiency pay to where it requires them to obtain an intermediate advanced or a master peace officer license. The more training these officers get, the better they are, uh, the better they can serve our citizens. It's not a lot, but it is an incentive for them to continue to maintain and to reach their goal. And on that second page, you'll see a breakdown of, uh, what it would cost us this year if we did do this. And that's seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Now this, this is a fee that would be budgeted annually because that number's gonna change. Uh, maybe each year, every two years, those officers are gonna advance up. So those numbers are gonna change a little bit as time goes. So I think that's something we would have to work to budget, uh, going forward because it's not just a one-time expense. Uh, it, it would be something that we essentially be married to. Next in your packet, you'll see the increase of staff. I broke this down on a three-year plan with an overall goal in mind of adding five additional patrol officers, uh, to our force. In this plan, we utilize the COPS grant. Now that COPS grant, if funded, would pay the full salary of these officers for the first year. Uh, the second year, the city would pay twenty-five percent. The third year, the city would pay fifty percent. Uh, fourth year, the city would pay seventy-five percent. And that fifth year, the city would pick up the full, uh, the full salary. Basically, the grant would go away at that point. The only requirement of that grant is that we do hold them to that fifth year and pay that fifth year salary. And if we choose a reduction in force or something of that nature, that would be up to the council. I don't recommend that, but I s- I tell you that's under, so that you understand that it's not, you're married to it for five years, but after that fifth year, if you so chose to say, hey, we need to drop an officer, that's something that we could, we could talk about. I would be against that, but that's just a solution that you have. What I'm really asking for in this is because applying for this grant, uh, if we were to obtain this grant, uh, there would be some requirements by the city that would cost the city. Uh, and what I'm asking to do is to apply for this grant and see, see if we're even awarded. That way, going forward, we'll know, uh, yes, they've said we've approved you for one spot, we've approved you for two. Uh, that way y'all are already involved in it and committed to those additional years, to those future years, uh, if we so choose to do this. And again, that is something that before we made that final call, obviously, I would come back before y'all and say, hey, we've been awarded, or we were awarded one, uh, you know, what direction do we want to go? We currently have ten patrolmen, uh, that patrol the streets. We have two officers per shift. Uh, so at night or during the day, we have two patrolmen that are responding to calls, making traffic stops, uh, that are out there available. During the day shift, uh, we have our administrative staff, which is myself, my assistant chief, and my captain. Um, and I have two detectives that are handling, obviously, major crimes, burglaries, uh, frauds, sexual assaults, uh, things of that nature. Even as a small department, even our top admin, we go out and respond to calls, uh, we work shifts from time to time, uh, just because it's necessary. Uh, the guys would be tired of multiple call calling, we'll go out and take those calls because that would have to be done. Each one of those administrators that I named, um, have a list of duties that they're required to do as well. We're not, when they're not taking calls, they're not just sitting in the office. Uh, we'll tell you, Captain Gate, for instance, he's over our property. That's a daily tour. He's also our emergency management for the city of Crockett. That's a daily tour. He's over our equipment and ordering, um, and validating, making sure we have all that equipment. My assistant chief, the same thing, he's over reports. We can't just do reports and send them straight up the hill. They have to be checked off, approved, corrected, um, among some of the duties that he does. There's a lot of things out there that, that these guys do that are not out on the street that make that department run. If we didn't have those, uh, our agency would not be nearly as successful as what we are. Uh, the Texas average is two point one officers per one thousand resident. Uh, we're setting at about one point three officers per one thousand resident. And when that, that recommendation is patrol officers that respond and act to calls reserved. And the last thing you'll see in our packet is vehicles. I'll be very upfront with you, our fleet right now is in probably the best shape that it's been a long time. I do wanna, I don't say that to say that we don't need a new vehicle. I want to keep that rotation going so we don't get in a situation where we're buying four or five at a time like we have recently. I think if we can continue to rotate the older vehicles out, uh, as of late, some of the other city departments have gotten use out of them, or we seem to get more money from, uh, the offshore from when we sell them. So, uh, I put two quotes in there. Uh, I know Councilman Ivey really liked the truck and so does, uh, Councilman Price. Uh, the trucks are considerably more expensive, uh, but they are very nice. And then, uh, the Dodge Durango, we seem to still have a hard time getting our hands on Pabos, but we've had good luck with the Durangos, uh, so we're not against, uh, not against that. So, I will fill any questions or if y'all want to move on to somebody else and then set up a time, however y'all handle that. Chief and Councilman Morris, make your notes over there.
Well, chief, um, I've got quite a few notes myself. Um, I, I've, I've actually, you know, uh, as I took a tour of your facility, uh, Mr. Don Hill, he's the architect, and I spoke with him. And, um, he said basically he could kind of sketch something out and, and help you look at possibly remodeling to where you can, uh, open up some things there in your facility and possibly add-on. So I'm just saying, maybe, um, move forward, talk it with him, see if he can sketch something out and see what we would have to do from there. Uh, also, um, and you say the, um, your, you said the raises that y'all received was two and a half years ago or your, or you?
Oh, I have to go back into the specific timeframe, but I would, I would say it's been about two and a half years.
Okay, you mean the one that's, the, the whole, everybody got?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, I think I recall that was last year, last, last?
That was twenty twenty-two, I believe.
We got what?
I believe the council did a.
We gave a, we gave a.
Cola, okay, a last year.
He's talking about when we, we went out and did a, um, multi-city survey to try to kind of level our, uh, catch up on a lot of our, uh, positions that were well underpaid in, uh, twenty twenty-two. That's when we really did a big, a big adjustment in pay. Then last, then last year we did a, yeah, the last year we did a two percent for, uh, cost of living.
Okay, okay.
What would you like to see, man? Would you like a new department or would you like to add-on? I mean, I, I think about the futures too, you know?
If you're asking my preference, um, I'll be very upfront. I would love to see a new facility for multiple reasons. Uh, we build it the way you want it, uh, plus it's a new face for the city. People see that new building, it adds, uh, makes the city attractive. People see that new construction. But I'm at the point of whatever we have to do. So I would love to see a new facility, um, that way it can be constructed the way that it should have been and should be constructed for a future. And the only way you can really do that is to start from the ground up. Uh, but to fix the problems we have and to get, uh, where I feel like we need to be to, uh, sustain our evidence management and what we have going right now, I am open to expansion. So, uh, there's a lot of variables there. Like, uh, if, if y'all said, hey, here's two million dollars or a million and a half, uh, do what you want to with it, I would build a new facility. Because I think that you can, uh, cut out any potential issues that you may have if you go from the ground up. Plus it adds, uh, makes the city a little more attractive when people see it. So that's, uh, if I had a wish of this, that's, that's what I would do.
What's the, what's the difference with the prices to add-on and, uh?
So, uh, the numbers that I have are rough estimates with the contractors that I met with. Uh, there were many other contractors, there were many other people to talk to. His rough estimates were expansion and adding on between six hundred and eight hundred thousand. A new facility, he recommended around five thousand square foot, um, would be about one point five million. So you're looking at about half or just under half.
He don't, he the only contractor you talked to?
So far, yes. I wanted to get more direction to see if this is something we're even interested in, uh, trying to attain and how we're gonna fund it, uh, before we start. Uh, because if it's something we decide to do, uh, there's a lot of steps to take when it comes to, uh, engineers, contracting, getting specific quotes, uh, being able to tell them specifically what we want. Cause they don't just draw plans up, uh, for free, there's a cost associated with that. So, um, he just happened to be willing to come over. I believe his company is the one that constructed Southland Federal Bank, or Southland Federal Credit Union. Uh, so he was willing to come over and take a look at it and offer his opinion. But as I said, there's many other people, there's local contractors, uh, that might be interested, uh, but I haven't taken those steps just yet.
So with that being said, would, out of everything that you presented to us today, what would you think, or what would you suggest would be the most, uh, would, would be priority? Would be, would, how would you prioritize your, your list, your facility?
As far as important?
Yes, what's most important to you, uh, for what you've given?
If I had to rate, uh, any of my requests in here today, uh, as most important, um, I think you're talking about salaries. Uh, because I think, uh, just as every one of us in this room at times likes to make ends meet, I know that my guys do too. And I'm sure Ritter Coulter's and, and everyone else in here. We have a different generation of people working for us today than we did ten, fifteen years ago. People to debt today, if they don't feel like they're being fairly compensated, they will leave. They will go find the money that they need to, uh, pay their house note to support their family, uh, because that's what they have to do. So that's one of the most important things to me. Um, I, in saying that, I don't want it to sound like we're not appreciative of the salary that we have because we've come a long way from when I first started here at eleven dollars an hour. We've come a long way. But just as it is for everybody, cost of living is skyrocketing. And these guys are gonna be able to buy homes just like everybody else. They won't be able to support their family. So, and then the facility is a very close second. And it's a very close second, uh, near the first because of the property room. That's an issue that has to be addressed. No matter what we decide to do, we still have to find a way to address that issue. So in the coming weeks, I'm gonna be working on different options. If we choose not to do a tax note and address that, um, different options to offer to fix that problem. Cause at the end of the day, um, any issues that arise out of that evidence room, uh, come back on him because he's our current property officer, and then come back on me. And just as he said, if we can't fix it, I wanna give it to somebody else. And I don't wanna be responsible for it. And I, I understand that. And how do you go to somebody else and say, hey, I know we have all these issues, but I'm gonna stick you in there and put you over? You can't do that, knowing that, that you have these issues. And I want to fix these issues before they become a problem and a blackout for, for the city as a whole, so.
How old is that, how old is that building?
Believe it was built, or they moved in in nineteen ninety-three? Oh, ninety-four. I was eleven years old.
So basically, so basically, actually, so we really, I mean, so we're not addressing a new building because we're trying to make space for your property room. So we're not looking at spending over two million dollars to address the property room issue, right? So that's, so with that being said, we could do a build out or a remodel or renovations there to make it to where it could serve its purpose, uh, for the time being until we come to, to the economy and we can see what's going forward. Because we don't know what's coming right now. We have no idea what's gonna happen with the economy. And I know a lot of the taxpayers right now are kinda like real leery and holding on to everything that they have. So with that being said, we, we do, I understand we do have to address the, cause I, uh, the property room because I went in there and I understand that. But I would say that we look at it to be more conservative, uh, on addressing issue for spending. Um, that's where I'm, I'm with that. Another thing too, uh, Chief, and not to, uh, you know, this is just me. Um, I, I think that, um, being that you only have two officers per shift, I'm thinking that we need to look at prioritizing staffing, um, the police department. Because when you have a call on one side of town and a call on the other side of town and where are the, where are the officers? And, and you get a call at Walmart, where are the officers?
It does. And I, and I've explained in some of the community roundtables, uh, I use an example of if, if we have a disturbance over, we'll say on North Fourth Street, um, if it's a verbal or physical disturbance, by policy and for safety reasons, most of those officers respond at that location. Sometimes those, those calls of service may last for fifteen minutes, sometimes it may be forty-five, depending on the situation. But during that time, the rest of the city is left open, there's no one rolling around.
Yeah, now, that's not total correct. You still got, can't detectives still do?
Currently, I'm talking about night shift.
Okay.
So at night, uh, those, those guys on the street, if they're on that call or something like that, that's leaves the rest of the city going. Criminals figured that out real quick. Uh, we've caught people on our camera driving by to see if they're parked here or to see what they're doing, to see if they're in the office working on something and then go out and try to do something. People are getting smart, they're paying attention to what's going on. So, uh, two officers on the street at night, um, can prove to be difficult. We try to be more proactive in stopping crime, um, instead of being reactive and coming back in and investigating. A lot of police work is reactive because the crime happens, you come in and try to solve it and put someone in jail or charge someone for the crime. But it's also our duty to be proactive and try to prevent that from happening. The only way you can do that is with visibility and people moving around. And at night, that's, that's tough with two officers. Day shift, uh, if we have a situation going on, we have two detectives in there. They're out of the office a lot because they're looking, they're reviewing surveillance videos. They're gonna follow up with this person, or they're gonna follow up with that person. A lot of people here, uh, I know we've heard the term community chiefs and odd opinions. A lot of people will bring that up at times because they don't truly know what, uh, those detectives are doing or what my assistant chief's doing, what my captain's doing. Are there times that, that maybe they could step out and go patrol? Absolutely, I'm not gonna lie to you. Uh, but there's majority of the time, they're locked in to doing something that is required of the department or that helps make that department run. So, um, I think staffing is important. And I think as the city continues to grow, we're way behind. If this city hit a growth spurt this year or next year, we're way behind. And I see that coming, not necessarily next year, uh, but I, within the next five years, I see our city growing.
Yeah, me too.
A lot more than what it is now. They say our population is under seven thousand, um, I don't think those numbers are accurate. You see, we see the traffic that's around the loop, um, at, at different times. We see the traffic count, the LPR of traffic coming into Crockett. Of course, all of us may not be staying here or living here, but there's a lot of people that pass through this town and there's a lot of people here on weekends. So I think, uh, if we start shifting the way of staffing, uh, in three to five years, we're not gonna be behind, uh, behind the eight ball, we'll already be ahead of it, so.
So with, with that being said, we can agree that possibly staffing would be our number one, um, item on the agenda, and then the property room would be possibly the second?
I, I don't think that I can, I don't think that I'll change my, uh, that I can change my opinion. I do think staffing is very important. And it's very difficult to prioritize these, uh, because truthfully, my opinion, everything that I've talked to y'all about today is important. But if I'm put on the spot and asked, I know what it's gonna cause, uh, our department and our city as a whole and our city government, the most problems. And that being, uh, inadequate facilities and that being turnover because of, of salary. We can't do any of the rest of this stuff. We can't hire additional staff if we're not attracting, if our salary is not attracting.
So let me ask you.
Our staff right now is primarily homegrown. We have one person that lives outside of Houston County, and that person just bought a home in Houston County because they like the city, they like working here. So you're not gonna get Fort Worth PD, Austin PD, Houston PD, tenured officers here for that. So I do think staffing is very important, but I think we have to address salary to continue to be able to recruit those people.
So Chief, are the, are these salaries that we have, they're, they're current?
So in that one, uh?
The current salaries, forty-five for us, fifty for Grapevine, and fifty-six for Madisonville?
Yes, sir.
That's all current?
That's our current starting, uh, salary for an officer out of the academy.
So we're the lowest on the totem pole then?
Now, that's starting.
That's starting.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, you gotta go to Dennis and look at, how many officers do Madisonville have?
That's what I, I, I.
How many lieutenants they got, how many sergeants they got, how many patrol officers?
I understand, yeah, I'm just, I'm just.
They might have less than us, so they're able to pay a little more.
Lot like we are. I think they have sixteen or seventeen officers versus our fifteen. Their command staff is set up similar. Uh, I don't, I don't recall if they had an assistant chief or not, uh, but their staff is set up relatively the same. Now, they do have an interstate that runs through their city, um, and they have some other, uh, maybe some other.
So they're closer to larger?
What's that?
So they're closer to a larger?
Right.
City?
Uh, Grapevine, uh, we can compare that all day long, but they only have, uh, five full-time officers. So I know when you're talking about fifteen versus five, that's, that changes, that changes the number. But at the end of the day, it doesn't change the issue. And that's, that's the, that's what I have to bring to y'all to try to find a way to address. So I don't want you thinking that, uh, adding staff is a slow priority. Um, I think it's very high priority, uh, but I think we have to continue, uh, to focus on, on things that can also get us in, uh, a legal bind, uh, things that are gonna help attract those other officers that we're trying to hire. And I think those are, are things that we have to look at in going forward.
Chief, not just to say, but I mean, it could also get us in a legal bind with not having the adequate staffing. Uh, and that's a real legal bind that we could really, really be in. So, uh, with that being said, some of those salaries that were increasing, we could hire more staff, um, there. So am I correct or not?
Well, so, so yes, uh, I guess technically what you're saying is correct. But if, if you're not increasing salaries and you're losing other people because they're going to find other jobs, now the five positions that you had, that you haven't filled, uh, now you're gonna add five more to it because people have left to go left and left to go right.
So my question, so my question is, so far as retention, so that's retention. So basically, we're trying to retain our officers. So if we continue to, so I guess compete with other cities that are larger than us, then we are, we'll never get the staffing that we need.
Gotta pay.
I mean, because we're, 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 we'll be way over budget. I mean, I asked, uh, other day, I asked, um, John to give me a copy of the employees' salary. And we're, 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 we're top-heavy, really. We're really top-heavy, um, to where we can't, I mean, I'm, where we can't, uh, where, where we're accommodating what we have. And I know we need to retain everybody that we have, and they're doing an excellent job. But we are overloading our, uh, staff as well. I mean, they're doing way more, you know, and some things are going lacking because of the fact that, um, we're not, we don't have staff. We, I mean, we have the, we have the supervisors and the administration, but we don't have the staff. And we need, we need the staff, not just in your department, but I've been looking at the whole, I mean, I mean, some were left out off, I believe, but just looking at the whole, um, pay report, we're top-heavy. And we need staff.
But I think, I think if you saw a breakdown, and, and I will get this for you, and I'll get it for everybody. I think if you saw a breakdown of what each one of these supervisors were responsible for and the things that they do on a daily basis, um, I think you would understand their positions and, and understand that it may look like we're top-heavy, uh, but even in lieu of these responsibilities and the duties they have, they still go out and patrol, they still go out and answer calls, they still cover a shift if this officer needs help. All hours of the night, taking phone calls, getting called in, um, whereas the other officers may not. If, if they're a patrol officer, they're not working their shift, they're not getting called out for pulling dead bodies out of the creek, uh, for investigating infant deaths or burglaries or fatal car crashes. Those guys that are top-heavy or those supervisors are getting called out to do that, um, all hours of the night. This pay scale, the way it's set up, is to attract long-term. If that first-year officer comes and looks and says, well, I know I'm gonna start out at this, but man, in six years or if I promote to this, this is what I'm gonna be making. Well, they have something to look forward to, they know what they're gonna be making, or they know what they, what they have coming for. They're a lot, lot more likely to stay around and be committed to the city versus coming here for two years, getting really good training, and then going and being a great officer for Houston or Dallas or DPS. We have to give them something to look forward to. And it may look top-heavy, uh, but in day-to-day operations, it's very light. But I think the way this pay scale is set up, it gives these officers something to look forward to. Because essentially, if you're looking at it now, you think, well, there's not a lot of turnover. Well, um, our, our top, top guys are either at retirement age or close to it. Now, I'm not notifying all that I'm retiring or that my assistant chief's retiring, uh, but there's gonna be room for growth in that department at some point. So these guys have something to look forward to, they know that if they stay here and they stay committed to the city, that they, they have something that, uh, that will benefit them. So, uh, we do need more boots on the ground, yes. But I think we have to look at it as a whole to attract them, and not only to attract them, but to keep them here, cause it does us no good. If we get them here, we spend all the money to send them to the academy, we get them through a six-month FTO process, and then in a year or two years, we say, hey, I'm headed here. It does us no good. And we do contracts, but at what point will someone agree to a three-year, five-year contract? It's gonna ultimately depend on what your salary, uh, schedule says and what they've got to look forward to in the future. So, um, I think everything works hand-to-hand, everything's very important. And as I said, it's very difficult to prioritize, um, these particular requests because in my opinion, they're all important, and some of them, uh, actually rely on each other, uh, to, to be successful.
I have one, one request for you, bro. If you could get more than one, uh, bid from the guys that could do the construction for the?
Absolutely.
If you could get about, if you could get about two more bids, maybe you can.
If you could get about, if you could get about two more bids, maybe you can make them work and-
The one that you were talking about, we'll reach out and see what, what number we can get and what we can do, and I'll, I'll present all that back to you.
Other than that, man, we wanna help you, you know, doing a good job, bro.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
Thank you for putting this report together, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you much.
I wanna call for about a five-minute recess, so everybody can go stretch their legs and-
Little Paul was with goes.
Yeah.
Just turn to what's in the view then?
Sure, Jay.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna talk about it.
I'm gonna throw it up on that one again. I have to buy tires and then have to do it. I don't have a tank of tire oil anymore. I didn't realize. It's like I found under his car. He's gonna get this. Is this live? Is this live? Yeah? Oh, yeah. Probably gonna- See how it's going with the different handling and the other one? Cause they're starting now. Sure. It's all right, it's a few just-
It's right now.
Oh, for recess, I think it's up. Great. Not that big.
I'm playing some of that thing.
I'll steal that one.
Yeah?
I remember that one. I'm like, yeah, yeah, that's good.
Old chick in out there. She's been, she's been busy on the old chain.
They have?
Mm-hmm, that's good. I'll be gone Saturday and Sunday.
This next Saturday's in?
Anything that comes up, we gotta go do that, uh, Dennis will be too. We're gonna go do that sheriff's convention in Fort Worth.
Is he singing it?
Well, yeah, we do the morning, Sunday morning service. We gotta set up sound system. We'll do music and help speak a little bit. Good getaway, we'll all go, uh, me and him and our, of course, our wives and the whole band will go down to Stockyards and eat Saturday night. That's always fun.
I guess they always have it in Fort Worth.
But sometimes you have it in Santa Tona. I like that too, cause you go down the River Road. But the last few years it's been Fort Worth. Pretty neat, we, we pull up there and- I'll bring chick in, they're gonna lift my door up, I drive into the convention center. That's where they got all the cop cars and helicopters, helicopters, all kinds of stuff, all the- Red and white shoes. Oh, I know. Little helicopters. Yeah. I was telling him about the sheriff's convention, I said, they have cop cars, radios, helicopters, everything inside there. They're all cheap, too.
Yeah, they're all cheap. Has red and blue lights on it, sure.
Great budgetary. Yeah, you know, see, this is what I'm wanting to know. And I, this is what I'm wanting to know. Like, like, please just, well, just, how many patrol officers do they have? Uh, their tenants do they have, how many sergeants do they have?
I don't know, I know number was, them and Madisonville are in number about the same as ours, like number, I think we're sixteen, so they're right. Oh, yeah.
So.
I mean, do I put a-
I'll go in and talk.
Okay.
Yes.
Your name?
Mr.- Sign, sign right there. M I, M I K. I got that one, I built that last one for you. Well, he said the last one. He may go, oh, yes, he said. Here too. God, what was that mean? Put an X down there and I'll, and I'll put a little X under to clarify that. Well, you know, of course, tax base.
Oh, yeah. We got with Buc-E's, their self, their property tax, since their, since Buc-E's opened up, their property tax took a, took a dive in the feathers. Sales tax.
Trevor said he went through there yesterday to drop off Tilly. Heather met him at Buc-E's. He said when he pulled off, it, first he said, I started hitting traffic, getting with us all the way to there. When he got to Buc-E's, he said there was a line to, to turn in that first driveway. He went over to the second turn in because the traffic at the line was backed up too. When he turned in that driveway, it took him fifteen minutes to get from there to the other side of the parking lot.
That's crazy.
Fifteen minutes. He said he was so mad the exit on five, get off there, they had to back it up close to half a mile. Where they normally do one, that exit, they had to back it up close to half a mile to accommodate.
Yeah.
Cause people were pulling off on interstate on the side to make that exit. But he said there were, there were so many people going, he said you could not get through there to even get to the twenty-one side. That's crazy.
You, you seen the Circle T, uh, in Navasoda, you been in the, you go over there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the one that's coming out there on the south way with the Circle T, a truck stop. Pretty, pretty-
Yeah, oh, you're slinking. Yeah. Is that the one that's got the, has that got the, uh, what restaurant is that in? Is that, that's not on OSR, right? No, no. That's all, that's, uh, uh, Arby's or- Arby's. Over there. Yeah. OSR. Yeah. Okay, guys, let's do it. We got quite a good lift. I just texted him and told her I wouldn't have lunch with him.
Well, get the fire department and I got mine boiled down to one page. One page is-
Not acting or anything like that.
Nothing. Yes, sir. Yeah, is it cold?
Where is it, Jason's way?
She didn't wanna be, which one?
Jason's.
Yeah, sure. It's, uh, yeah, it's in the- Okay, yeah. Yeah, it was right before the police department. This is the, the only one that police department, or fire department has. It's a lift station? When the- Some sewer all flows downgrade, right? You gotta keep on flowing down, it don't, it won't go uphill. So on the South Nineteen side, at Nottingham Woods over there by twenty-twenty-two, there are two areas where all the sewer flows to one point. And then it has a lift station and it pumps it up about thirty feet and gets it up closer to the top of the ground again and then flows to the treatment plants. We used to have four or five of them. And with new technology, we've eliminated, we only have two lift stations now. Yeah, I'll explain that one. Um, this lift station here, it's a, it's another one that's fallen, fallen apart on the-
Five minutes. Hit you, yeah. Hit you, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's old.
We'll resume the meeting, uh, Jason, I guess you're next, fire department.
I'll about this this morning, I like to have a briefing when I talk about something, so I can, I'll tell you. All right. I'll just ask for, uh, Jonathan Salkin, you know, it's not really a one-time fee that I'm asking for, I'm asking for an extra, for, to add another firefighter to my staff. Currently, we got five paid firefighters, uh, they work two days on, four days off. Uh, and there's one shift that's missing a guy, so every day of the week, there's two firefighters at the station. That third, that third, uh, shift that's missing that one extra person, that this is the one I'm trying to fill, I'm filling with some part-time people. Uh, and even sometimes that's hard, if, if they got, they're working their early drive and stuff like that, it's hard getting that, uh, person to get there to cover that shift. And, and I have worked those shifts too, uh, here in the last couple of weeks, there've been people taking off and stuff like that, so, uh, I've been having a pool of forty-eight, ninety-six shift myself, just so we got those two people there every day. I think we kinda set that at a standard to have the two people there to pay personnel. And on average, if you average the calls out, they are the ones that ask or, or running the calls, answering the calls, the two people would probably, safe to say ninety-five percent of the paid staff is answering the calls. Uh, just to let y'all know, and I want y'all to be aware of this, uh, even that one person, it is still helping now, but in the long run, as volunteerism is done, you know, I was here last year asking for people, I'm telling them I always need people. Uh, I consider us to be an aggressive, aggressive department. When I say aggressive department, we're gonna show up, we go inside the house, we put the fire out and save taxpayers money, uh, uh, not in their house, but get them put in the burner, we get in there and knock the fire out and they have a stable house, they got insurance, somebody will build. Just to let y'all know, uh, there's a rule in the fire service, there's two people that goes in the house and there's two people outside the house, which we call the rapid team, which is rapid and the visiting team, to go in to save those two firefighters or help them rescue an innocent person on the inside. So, yes, we got those two firefighters, they're getting there to the scene, one's gotta pump the truck, then you got the one guy. We're not making that minimum requirement to get the two people out. And, and time is money in our business. The sooner we can get there, the sooner we can put the fire, the sooner we can go and do a, a primary search and make sure nobody's in there. Yes, we do have mutual aid groups with LaTexO, they are also facing the volunteerism crisis too. And volunteers that are there, we're getting older, I can actually put myself in that. Where we need people that can go in, pack out and stuff like that, well, there's all these rural departments, they're having older people, the younger generation's not coming there. So, yes, we got a mutual contract with LaTexO who backs us up to help. We need that two in, two out person, but by the time you pays in, we're looking at them being anywhere on scene from six to, se- six to ten minutes before they show up. And that's valuable time when the fire's burning, so, uh, just not saying we're not, you know, our volunteer. I'm gonna go over that, what I just handed you. Uh, our full-time staff is the one highlighted in blue, I just wanted y'all to see my roster, what I'm working with. Uh, the part-time people that's in yellow, that means they're only work when they're assigned to. They're not gonna come in after hours or anything like that, cause some of those people, they don't even, uh, there's a couple of them that don't live here in profit, so they're only gonna work when they're assigned to work. Uh, the ones that's purple slash, uh, orange, those, that, those are my two volunteers who also are certified and they can work part-time hours. When you fall down to the orange, that is actually all the volunteers that we have on our department this time. Uh, so say eight to be safe, it's the six that's in, uh, orange, but if those, uh, other two guys that's in the, uh, purple and orange pull the shift, you might, you count those up, the other guy's not gonna be responding, so at the end of the day, I have six people, six volunteers that are possibly gonna respond to a call. Uh, I just, there's a hard decision to be making in this, is I want y'all to be aware of the decision I might have to make, which is gonna reflect the city. At some point, we're, like I said, we're, uh, correct, the department will go in and do stuff. There's gonna be a time where we even have enough manpower on scene to meet that two in, two out. And I'm gonna have to make that decision, I can't send the two guys in because I am breaking what I can get, uh, in trouble with is, uh, the people that regulates us, kinda like TCO or P, uh, police partner, it is Texas Commission on Fire Protection for us. Anytime we don't meet that requirement, two in, two out, we go in, I gotta send a report to TCFP why I made that decision to do it. So at some point, there's gonna be a hard decision to be made on my part, we can't go in cause we don't have the adequate person to go save the firefighter if they get injured, or, you know, we're gonna have to do some surrounding and drowning, which we don't like doing. Uh, we take great pride in what we're doing and is this one person, is it stepping in the right direction? Hopefully, uh, uh, I'm currently working on trying to get like a junior program into the schools to, uh, I'm trying to get where we can get more volunteers. Um, uh, if y'all got any suggestions on how to do that, like I say every meeting- If y'all got any suggestions on how to do that, like I say every meeting, give them to me. I'm willing to try anything at this point to get volunteers. So, uh, nutshell, basically, I just wanted y'all to see my roster and actually break it down to you. Because at every meeting, I said, I got seventeen people. But this is actually breaking them down. The paid guys, the part-time guys, the volunteer and the part, uh, part-time slash volunteers. So with that being said, uh, is there any questions for me?
So you said when those guys go out and the volunteers, y'all call them in or how does that work?
Every call that comes in for us, uh, the volunteers, I got pagers and we got apps on the phone. So they're at work, we have a call. But they're at work. It's not like it used to be, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, when the businesses were letting them go. They're not there at the business, they're not helping making any money. So I understand that. But everybody knows when we get a call, everybody that's on this list either carries a pager or they get alerted on their phone to respond to the fire department.
So have y'all considered, uh, like chiefs doing, uh, apply for grants to?
Yes, the grant, we're, that's what really started all our paid guys with grants. Well, this year, they changed a lot of stuff where it used to be it was free at first, or the first year was covered and it went down in percentage. Well, now, the first year, you got to pay twenty-five percent. So this is what I'm trying, this is what I wanna do is, is get this position filled because, like I said, two people's really not enough when you show up on scene. I want to apply for grants like Clayton was talking about and get, get that three, well, there's three people every day. So you got the driver and the two firefighters that can go in. So my, my goal is to apply for the grants to meet three people a day. So we can at least, you know, have stuff to work with or, you know, stagger them or maybe bring the second truck, you know, stuff like that. It's just, it's always good to definitely know what's coming in this field, know what works today and what don't work tomorrow. So you constantly got to overdraft with the manpower and all that stuff. So, yes, I'm trying to just meet where this is like, we got, we get our two shifts every day, then apply for the grants for those next three to have the three people a day.
So what are your shifts?
Our shifts are, you work. There's an A, B, and C shift. And like I said, they're, they're, they're at the station for forty-eight hours. They sleep and stay at the station for forty-eight hours and they're all four days. Most of everybody on this, that, they got a second job and they work their four days off. So most of some, two of those, I can just about write off. That's not gonna make a call, but we have some after, after hours.
So do they have to stay at the station for forty-eight hours?
Yes, they are, they are there. They show up at seven o'clock in the morning, then it'll lead to forty-eight hours later at seven o'clock in the next day.
All right, so that's what I'm saying, so they have to.
Sure, John.
There's upstairs, uh, whenever we can, I know we've been hit or missed on coming by the station, but there are living quarters upstairs. There's a bed, there's a kitchen, a bathroom, shower, and like a little, a couple chairs there and watch TV at night.
So is it required by the state that they stay for eighty hours?
It's not required. Uh, we've tried, like I said, usually when this first came out, the full-time people, and we had a lot of volunteers that couldn't come during the day. So we initially started out, basically, they worked, uh, four-ten's. They was there during the hours, then at night, had a bunch of volunteers there, which, you know, we had the manpower that, that slowed down. So we went to a twenty-four hour shift. Well, a lot of people don't wanna work a twenty-four hour shift, whereas we're training people, they wanna work that two days and they're all four days and then go work a second job and do something on the days off. And that's, uh, a couple of, three of those actually did. One, two people work for different departments and, uh, one has their own business that they do stuff on their days off, so.
What do y'all do to try to get like volunteers to?
Read a breakdown in paper. Uh, last year, I almost started, I started earlier, I went to the junior high, taught them just to, it's like, hey, you know, look forward to this and returning team, come on, come give us your time. We got grants, so pay for your certification. Yes, we know we might not be able to retain you, but at least we got you and trained you and have you in our community, you know, till they, uh, get their certification done. As it is, people, the new generation, I don't, uh, it's hard to retain people here like Clayton was talking about. But most of my people that are full-time, they live here and it was easier to retain those people. We'd like to hire from them then, if we hire somebody, before we hire from without. So if we got somebody real listed two weeks internally, see, uh, you know, people that's already here, best of your, don't want them to move away. I mean, I never wanna leave. I was born and raised here, never left here.
Yeah.
Uh, so always when we get a position, we hire from them then before we hire from without. So we're not having to go all the way. Because if we hire from without nine times out of ten, we're just, they're just filling spots so they get home to the bigger department, they don't, so.
You think it's something else we make a do to try to get the word out maybe like?
I'll take suggestions. We've been in paper, social media. Uh, I just don't know what it, uh, if, if we could figure it out, we can retire them because nationwide, or it's not getting volunteers. Uh, we had the newspaper, they come out, they done stuff in the paper. Uh, even when we do stuff like Walmart stuff, we got applications there, hey, anybody wanna, wanna tell them the fire department? Come talk to us. The deal is, we have a lot of people that, not a lot of people, we have people come there. Normally how it works, if you wanna get on the fire department, show up somewhere by our drill now, which is, uh, first Mondays and third Thursdays. Hey, come see what we're doing, because it's not just, you know, put the wet stuff on the rest stuff, you know, there's stuff we gotta do. And some people, they come through our drills and they're like, oh, I didn't know you, y'all done all this, I'm tapping them. So I just, if we could figure out what draws their attention and keep them here, we could, we could solve, like I said, it's not just the city of Crockett that's facing the volunteers. It's, it's nation, nation, nationwide, so.
Okay, um, so on the, um, but like you were saying about the forty-eight hours. So you said it's not necessarily that they have to stay there the forty-eight hours. It's just the schedule that you've, you've arranged?
Texas code is forty-eight, ninety-six, and they are, they are, they're on, if any call dropped, those two people are there for that forty-eight hours to respond.
That's pretty much nationwide.
Yes, that's most, most departments, that's.
Yeah, but when you have a small city, uh, those fire department, the firefighters don't usually stay, uh,
Yeah, they do.
The twenty-four hours, do they?
Yeah, people do, yeah.
I mean, I know somewhere like Houston or whatever, so what are the average calls? What are we, what are we averaging for the, the calls for the city?
If you average, you average, you're averaging one point five calls a day, you average one point five calls. Some days, that might be, like on a storm day, that might be fourteen calls. Uh, or, uh, usually this time of year, we're into grass fire season, but thank God for the rain that we received and we're not really high in the grass fires now. But, you know, it might be, they might go there, they might not be at all. But they got the stuff they do, money through, through seven days a week. There's a check, they check the trucks off every day, there's, uh, stuff we gotta do, like their air packs, all that stuff. So the trucks are always ready to go. And that's how we catch stuff that might be broken or stuff like that. Every day's a, every day's a truck. So this truck is being watched this day, we're checking all the equipment on it. Even though it's that truck, but the guys that there wear air pack or the paid guys, they gotta check off on two more trucks on those air packs and make sure they're ready to go, because they might not go in. Our personnel usually might have to go into the county engine or, or another engine. So they're always prepared to go in whatever truck they, and they're checked off to go on the air packs. For most big, say, bigger department, you got one truck, one station. We got several trucks, one station. That meets different requirements. We don't have several departments that, this one's for house fires, this one's for races, and this one's for, we do all of them.
So my next question is, and I'm not trying to call y'all out or anything, but so from what budget are we paying, Mr. Stanley? Are we paying from the fire department budget or the city budget?
It is, uh, there is a, as it is right now, there is a fire department budget and there's a fire marshal budget. So the fire marshal budget is a budget separated. Uh, when I was fire marshal, we had to have a separate budget. That's maybe, I meant the requirements for, uh, stuff with the police side of it. So that's how we had to break them up. Back, uh, in twenty-fourteen, had to break, break it up.
Okay, so we're paying Mr. Stanley from the fire, the fire marshal budget? Okay, we, okay.
Have you, uh, at all, maybe, uh, with, with us going into the county so much and, uh, using our paid firefighters to go, about maybe contacting ESD about providing a full-time firefighter for Crockett?
I don't think they will, they might go up on our annual, or their annual payment, but.
I mean, we do use our paid guys to go into the county.
Right.
So that would be an avenue, avenue to maybe get one or two guys and let them say, hey, look, you know, we, we're using our paid guys to go into the county to, to cover and.
That might be something, or that contract should be coming up, maybe next year, also that contract's coming up. Uh, called the current contracts that will provide, as y'all was talking about contracts, the current contracts that will provide the same service that we offer for the city of Crockett. They're the same, we give them the same, uh, deal, that might be something, when it come contract time again, it's like, hey, we're gonna offer you the same thing you get in our county, the volunteers that come in will be the one responding for y'all, so. But they're going into their budget, I will, their budget workshop, I think, next month.
I would maybe mention something to them, you know, just say, hey, look, this is where, the way we're going. Uh, we need help and we don't have the guys to go, you know, I, I feel like they need to have a little bit of.
I, you know, so.
I do, I feel like it.
With that being said, would you, uh, ask them to consider, uh, paying half of salaries?
I say firefighter, a whole firefighter.
Half of all the, all the salaries?
Yeah.
I mean, if we, if we're using all the firefighters.
Y'all tell me what y'all want me to ask them? And I'll ask that y'all, uh, let John or Lee, someone, somebody else come with me to have the data. And so we can have a closed session meeting with them to talk, discuss our contracted stuff. So I'd like somebody besides myself to be there to.
I don't think they do have.
Y'all give me directions, how y'all want me to, uh, go.
All of, all of them are going out there.
What I'm saying is, is we, we, we do run more calls in the city, so than we do the county, but, uh, and they all don't go.
When they're on duty?
Yeah, when they're on duty, but, uh, I'm just trying to get another firefighter and if they paid for it, um.
Cause we're, we're, we're actually paying for six firefighters. We're actually paying for six. I mean, we, I mean, cause we have, um, Lee on there as a fire marshal. So we're already.
My name, y'all paying for me?
Oh, yeah, and you too, I'm sorry. Seven, okay.
So to let y'all know, like, when I show up on scene as a chief, the way the TCFP rules are, I'm not supposed to, I'm supposed to be the one overseeing the whole accident.
TC.
TCFP, Texas Commission on Fire Protection, who governs our license. So when I, when I show up, I'm supposed to be the one directing the scene and, uh, same safety, all that good stuff. Uh, plus I do still fire, so. It's a small town, we don't have a lot of people, and I still.
Who's over?
And we're bound to have them.
Who's over y'all's social media?
Uh, I got, I'm Mr. Kim that helps me. Somebody still have that top.
I think y'all take advantage of social media. Make, make flyers, pages, I mean, that's, you gotta put it out there, man. You gotta take, tell Kim she gotta take more advantage of that social media. And get the, get the word out there, you know? Make some nice little flyers or something, you never know where it come from.
You know, and my base on other incentives that y'all looked at to, for you to attract. Uh, one thing I think John looked at in the past is, hey, if you're, you're firing, you get water bill. Not, you don't have to pay a water bill to live inside the city. So that's something, we gotta come up with some kind of incentive to attract people to, uh, to just know.
You the chief, man, you the chief.
Revenue like that back in the day. But there's gonna be minimum requirements you gotta, you gotta make, you know, because I don't want just everybody, oh, I'll get paid water bill and, and I might take a call off. So they gotta, they gotta minimum requirements. And also, y'all, if y'all look, there's a lot of empty spaces up there below my name. The volunteers used to, they used to be volunteer officers, so those current volunteers aren't making a percentage a year to, to get those volunteer officer positions. So as y'all were saying, uh, there's, there's one chief and not enough Indians in my case.
I can see, I can see probably, you know, one reason maybe that you're not getting the, the volunteers. Because, I mean, you have paid staff. So a lot of them that's really wanting to come out, they're like, well, they're getting paid to do the job.
Yes, and we ran into that, uh, just to give, uh, uh, the last three, they're not gonna show up till probably after hours. Uh, actually, the last one is, uh, he actually, last month, I mean, he just got on last month and he made, I would say, almost every call. So I'm selling my paid guy today, because we gotta have the shows are coming to the station. Y'all wait an extra two minutes for him to get there, because he's trying to put his heart into it and we don't even be leaving him at the station going, I'll just show up at the station, I don't have to do nothing. Or he don't get to do nothing, so we're having to always definitely overcome. So we're staying that extra two or three minutes, waiting on him to come in, till he get the experience as a fire department, so. Well, we're used to, that's all we got, we gotta go. But we slowed down this last month, wait for these guys that are coming to the station, let them, let them get on the truck.
I was, uh, also another incentive, and I was looking at it, um, last year, last year budget, and I really didn't know what it was. I was really questioning it and, uh, I talked to John the other day about it. And it was the incentive of, for volunteers to, uh, come in and have a retirement. So, uh, I didn't even know that volunteers had a retirement.
Yes, they are. If they put in enough time, they will get a retirement, so. It's not gonna be a lot, but it's, you know, when you retire, it's actually a hundred bucks a month on a head.
Hundred and fifteen, thirty, something like that.
Do you ever finish it? Do you ever come and?
Put my application.
That's something that we could look towards is maybe pay more than that, so it might draw some of the people like, hey, I thought I had a ten-year dollar, we bring a hundred bucks, a hundred dollars a month, and I'll be sending it back on up into.
So you will look in, into, uh, possibly applying for some type of, or searching for some type of grants to?
Yes, that's gonna be something I'm about to bring back to y'all, say, okay, year one, if you get three people, we gotta pay twenty-five percent of their salaries the first year. Then the second year, we gotta pay forty percent. Then the third year, I think they even knock it down. I think it used to be five years, now the fourth year is a hundred percent yours.
So is that something that you think that, uh, ESD would buy into?
Maybe.
How would that work? John, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's reasonable if we provide a light service, whatever we do in the city and our citizens are paying taxes for, we should present that is, that same level of responsibility and footing the bill to the ESD. Um, like I said, the fire marshal, that position is for the city, it's for, it's not, that, he doesn't work out in the county. But other than that position, everybody, Jason, whether it's a city call or in Weeches, he goes and all of our firefighters go, the same number of people, trucks and everything. And so, I mean, just that budget line out of a loan is three hundred and seventy thousand, you know? So I think it should be presented that they should cover half of it. If, they want the same service that the city provides, because when they're gone to Be Lauda, Weeches or somewhere else.
The city's.
The city has zero people left in it for any of our fires.
And so that means that we're, as a city, is, are paying.
A foot in the bill for the county.
Basically for the county.
That, maybe we could, I mean, the other thing is, um, like you were mentioning, we're in a, a digital, a digital environment where a lot of information, it's easy to get out and get in the young people's minds, kind of get it in the forefront of their mind. Maybe we do s- a, a few ten-second, fifteen-second, like when you're scrolling on Facebook and those, you know, videos come up.
That's big, man.
You show, hey, did you ever think that you could be this? We'll pay for the training, these are the benefits. And give some, just something to plug in their minds.
We gotta have social media, man, you gotta take advantage.
Did you say some type of compensation with that or no?
Well, we, we already have quite a few different incentives and, and compensation, like you were talking about just a minute ago, the retirement. And you get paid for when you do go to these calls. We're not asking you to volunteer for free. We're compensating you some, so that's additional sources of revenue and training. You can become a paid certified firefighter, EMT for, and start working here full-time. and start working here full time or for another city, and we can provide all those at no cost. If you get somebody good in marketing and putting little that and P D, you know, and just plug this area within a fifty mile radius, if you're around here, and you're scrolling on Instagram or Facebook or TikTok, you get hit with those videos.
People stay on their social media.
How much we need them.
And you did say you, you're thinking about attempted to implement a junior firefighter program?
Looking into that, uh, that's something I requested out to, uh, to get the information if it was legal and all that stuff, cause they're not permitted to go into a structural fire, they can go with this on a grass fire, so it took a lot of legal side to this person. So I reached out to, uh, to look at a junior firefighter program. Definitely, we're getting into schools of the graduate.
See, when I'm on social media, I don't, I don't see nothing about Crockett Fire Department.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not socially, I'm not on social media, so that's not my, my thing, I got it, but I don't know how to push all that stuff, so that's something.
But we need somebody to push, I see Crockett Police Department and I see them all the time, I don't see too much about the fire station.
Yeah, and I don't have the time, cause we're so short, I don't have the time to sit there and top all that stuff, cause I'm dealing with the calls.
Can, can you get somebody though that's one of the, one of?
More money, they'd be more happy to do it.
We already paying them, let's make them part of the.
And these are the guys that go into the calls, you know?
So what they doing when they not going through the calls? Sitting down.
I'm not a social media person, I'll try to work with some people, see what we can come up with, but.
We need it, man.
Some of the pushes require extra ten dollars a year, fifteen dollars to push you down for a certain area and stuff like that, so.
I mean, it's free.
I just think in, in general, I think if he has a, um, assistance, yeah, I think that would be beautiful to see, uh, it's especially when, when they're receiving the same services. And, um, and the city's actually putting the majority of the.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Alright, Mayor, Council, I know you're, you are starting to fade real quick, so I wanna go through these, you stop me when you have a question. As we build this budget, uh, moving forward, um, based on y'all's recommendations and pro, and, and priorities, um, I'll continue keeping y'all up, up to speed on what sources of revenue we have come in to, to, uh, build any of these capital requests in, up from police, fire and, and public works, um, and then, um, we can build our budget base around this. The only one on this, on, that I'm gonna be presenting to you that is a multi-year appropriational expense is the first one. Like Clayton said, I would not be doing our department's service, our, our, our employee's service if we didn't try to continue staying. Right now, we're behind the curve, but we need to continue trying to meet, um, meet the, the needs of our employees and cost of living, um, increases. In twenty twenty-two, the C P I for our region increased by eleven point two percent to date. So reflecting the ongoing rise of, of goods and services, over that same period since twenty twenty-two, the city has provided a two, two percent COLA that was implemented last year, still leaving a pretty good gap that we gained a lot of ground, but if we don't continue pushing, we're going to lose a lot of that ground that we gained. That being said, what we're, the, the main thing that we're finding out with our employees are not what other cities are paying. Our employees that are leaving us are not going to other cities, they're going to the private sector, you know, they're going somewhere where, where we require them to maybe have C D Ls. They can go to a company with a C D L and make significantly more. Uh, we try to attract them with good benefits, uh, you know, paid health insurance and, and retirement system and stuff like that. But like I say, a lot of the younger, younger crowd that were trying to have work for us, they're not necessarily looking at those long term, they're not paying attention to retirement quite yet. They're looking at the dollar per hour, um, and if, and so the ones that we're losing are going to the private sector a lot, so. I really, those are the ones that I want to address more than, more than anything. Um, I presented two, two costs for all employees, then that would be all city employees, including the police department. Uh, so for all city employees, um, for a three percent, and this, this covers the salaries and benefits, cause as you increase salaries, the retirement percentages go up, the F I C, the amount that you put into workers, you know, compensation, um, all of that goes up. So it's a hundred and fifteen thousand for all, all employees for three percent, uh, COLA. And it's a, for a five percent is a hundred and ninety-one thousand for all city employees.
And John, I said a few minutes ago, I mean, I appreciate all, all the employees, but I think right now, now to me, I think right now, with our local economy, the way things are going, I think that, you know, we need to possibly look at, um, the COLA raise, um, in our next budget. We are, and like I said earlier, we are top heavy, and we're gonna have to figure out, um, our, our staffing, because, uh, as I was talking to you the other day about Mr. Coulter, he needs staff, he needs, he needs someone to assist him with those, uh, the streets, the infrastructure, I mean, we need, we need staff, and I understand, and what I'm, I'm seeing is I understand that you're saying, you know, we wanna pay our people, yes, we do, wanna pay our people, but we also need staff as well, I mean, uh, chief needs staff, I mean, we, we're, we're overloading our people here. Um, when just say, just like, I'm just gonna use Miss Selena, just like if the water department, you have one person in the water department. If she's sick, then you pull in Miss Selena to go in the water department. Uh, you have Mr. Calver, I think this is not, Mr. Calver, you have him listed in the water department, but I don't know if he works in the water department of where he actually worked. So what I'm saying is, we're gonna have to really look at our staffing plan. Um, you, I mean, we have people in departments that they're not really working in those departments, so.
They're all, they're all being.
Or either they la, or they labeled to be working in those departments and I don't know where they're working.
Yeah, they are, so, um, we, we, that, that right there is a, a very fine measure of, we can, we can choose to, um, increase people, as we, the, the argument is a hundred percent that we need more, more people. I've been talking about with that, with Mr. Coulter, for instance, in the street department, total of five people for all of our streets, maintenance, ditch work, mowing, patchwork, new street construction, so even when we're doing new projects, we're bringing in parks department and water department to help us, to get enough people all at once, cause you need, you need more than just a few people when you're having all that equipment out there. That being said, by putting that money and increasing staff and not maintaining salaries, we're also losing staff and we can't even maintain the people that we, the positions that we currently have.
Okay, so. So why is it that we can't, yeah, why, why is it that, I mean, that's what I'm saying, so we, we, we are overloading our staff. We, we don't have the, the staff, and I see what your point is, your point is, don't hire anybody, just keep increasing the, the salaries.
To keep the people.
Maintain, but then you got the city going lacking, you have the, the, uh, residents, they're, they're, they want their streets done. We got infrastructure that's, that's going wrong, like the other day, the pipe busted on, uh, uh, two twenty-nine, you know? So, I mean, things like that, I mean, we, we need to meet the needs of the residents. I mean, so much stuff, there's things that have been, um, lacking in our city that has not been paying attention to.
I think a lot of it also.
We need to start, as a council, we need to start paying attention to the needs of the people. They want better streets, they want better infrastructure, uh, I mean, that, those are the two main things that they're, they're asking.
I, I think.
So I think we need to address those.
But they don't wanna pay taxes.
They don't pay taxes.
What we gonna get to?
Hold, 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 rephrase that, we are paying taxes, cause I'm, ne- nevertheless, not just being a council member.
Well, let me.
I am a taxpayer as well, and I pay taxes religiously.
We all, we all are.
Okay, so that's what, that's what I'm saying.
They don't wanna increase in taxes.
So, so, so the issue, the issue is, this is the big dilemma. People, and as more, it seems recently in the last few years, one, the people have begun to see something happening, but it's almost like it's not happening fast enough, because it's, maintenance has been delayed for so many years, thirty and forty years with no real projects going on. We've been patch, patchworking on top of patchworking, and we've run out of time, so they see work getting done now. We've overextended ourselves, me and Mr. Coulter, we can sit down and tell you right now, the expectations on our departments has increased so much over the past few years, because we've taken on a lot on our plate, and we're at the point, one, we really need to chew up the stuff that's on our plate first, with the people we, we have before we take on too many more projects, because we have lots of ongoing projects and, and just a small amount of people to take care of it.
That's one.
So, so the need, uh, I'm not arguing with you, I, I agree a hundred percent, we do need more staff if you want to continue at the rate that we're, that we've been working on. The amount of work that's been getting done, we've done, seen a lot of progress, but what's happening is, every project that we take on and bite, we take the bite out, we need to continue maintaining that project, that street that we fixed five to six years ago is already coming up for, uh, maintenance, like another chip seal or. And so if we continue more projects and don't finish the projects that we already started, we're on a runaway train without, we don't have the staff and ability to keep this, uh, to keep it in this, in this project, trajectory. So, yes, we need more people, if you want to continue seeing the amount of work that's been getting done. We need more people, and we need to keep, we've, our biggest struggle has been training people that finally get to know how to run our road grader, our chip sealer, our oil truck, our oil truck takes a, you gotta have a master's degree almost to run, to know the system, the computer system, and, and run it without it. I mean, J- Gerald knows that the, the temperatures need to be so perfect, you know? The, the speed that you're putting on distributing that oil, and we, we ultimately, almost every project, we have several hiccups trying to get these, re, train, training everybody, and once we get somebody trained, okay, you're gonna, you're, you're our operator for our oil truck, you, you really got the knack for it.
Well, you won't have five people, I mean.
I know, that's what I'm.
Five people, so.
So once I lose.
The ones calling sick, then what?
I agree a hundred percent.
If you got another, you've got two people calling sick that day, then what is that?
I second that motion, so.
Okay.
All of this, I agree with, so that is the problem, if we lose one person, one person either goes to another job, we leave, lose him for better pay somewhere else, one calls in sick or something happens, we're down by twenty percent of our employees right there, damn. If two of them done it, we might as well just move to just a few patchwork that day and forget any projects that we had scheduled that week. So I agree a hundred percent, but we also, as we train and teach these people how to run this equipment and become proficient, I got to try to stay competitive and keep those people, I could open up twenty more positions and they will all be empty. Or the people that show up, we don't want them running that old truck, or we don't want them running our motor grader, cause they'll take out every, you know, uh, meter in hydrant in the, in the neighborhood, so it requires a balance, is what I'm saying, I'm not arguing with you, I agree a hundred percent. There's gotta be a balance of what we're paying to retain people versus just saying, hey, let's add another fifty thousand dollars for a full salary package for somebody else, for another employee, and we've prioritized that, and we, one, we can't recruit top talent, especially somebody with a C D L or operating experience, and we lose our people that we finally got trained, that's kinda been a revolving door, so I've got to try to maintain some, some quality employees and bring in new people and not raise a dime in taxes, so that's the big, that's the.
That's almost impossible.
It is, it is a hundred percent, we're set up for failure, we're, we're continually being set up for more failure when we can't re, increase revenue, but we need to continue doing more and more to stay on top of things and, and catch up and, and, and go at the rate that we've already been going, cause we've, we've made a, a bit of progress, but we're realizing quickly, well, we need to slow down and maintain the, the stuff that's already on our plate before we bite off more. And I, I think Gerald was wanting to mention something.
Yeah, we're, we're basically facing a two X four, either way you go, you're facing a two X four, you mentioned the asphalt truck. The gentleman I had run the asphalt here last year, he's gone, he let it run itself, so. They're coming in, they're training now for, you know, cause the first opportunity to shoot this week, sometime this week, on E Z Wilson. So we're facing a two X four, yes, we need people, but yes, we need to retain some experience too.
Right.
Because it's hard to fill experience. Once that person is gone, then you have to start all over again with somebody younger, with the hopes that they got enough doggone faith to go stay around here, because what, what we get this friction over, on the street crew and, and all the one crew also, is you get picked and trained, they're working good, but social media, they're always scrolling, and when they see that job, it's gonna be a war.
They're gone.
But my question is, with that being said though, do we continue to give raises every year? I mean, to, I mean, I mean, cause looks like, like I said, we're, we're, we're real, we're, we are top heavy.
I, I know you keep on talking about.
I mean, I'm looking at this, at these salaries here, and I'm, I'm like, where are the people that, I mean, I mean, the, the, the top heaviness is, I'm like, some of these, these jobs, we could, we could have hired, on some of these salaries, we could have hired, uh, extra people, you know?
But then that, then the work that those people, then the work that those people are doing, we won't have somebody qualified to do the work that those people are doing, we are, when you say top heavy, we have very few supervisory positions. We do have good pay, I'm not up here fighting for a, for, for an increase for myself or for any of our company.
You're on there, so.
Cause you asked for my salary, I gave you my salary, I'm not asking you for my salary increase, I haven't got a pay increase since I've been here in, in nine years.
Now salary increase, but you got the COLA.
No, ma'am, I've, I've, I've refused COLA increases since I've been here, and so if top heavy is, you wanna look at me.
You said, you said for all, right, last year.
He should get something.
He's, he's got plenty.
He should get something.
He's, he's getting plenty.
Well, when you, when you.
For a city our size.
No, for a city our size.
City our size, not close to.
For a city our size.
Not close to a big city.
He's forty thousand dollars under other cities outside.
For a city our size, I get paid much, much less than any other city manager, so if we wanna talk about.
Cities that you look at, were they close to Houston, Dallas?
Oh, go to Center, Texas, Center, Texas.
I'm talking about every city around us, every city around us, so that's another discussion that we can have, cause I'm, I'm already ready to have that discussion as well. What I'm fighting for right now is the people, is all my entry level people, those five on his department, his patrolman, he, I, I guarantee you he'd be willing to give up his salary, any salary increases for all the top heavy people you're talking about. We have very few supervisors when it comes to that ratio of who's getting the work done, and the supervisors that we have are out there with oil in their hands too. They're getting the work done with those people.
And I understand that, but that's, but it's the matter of, like I said, I understand that, but he's, he, he, he's, he's one person, and two people calling in, and he only has five of his staff, so, I mean, I mean, so we need staff, really.
I mean, I would, I would love, I would love to see everybody getting paid more.
I agree.
But what about the people in the town, in the county?
We, we, we're lacking, we're, the citizen residents are lacking.
Don't get me wrong, I would love to see everybody in the city get paid, but what about the other businesses up here that's struggling, man?
Everybody is.
I mean, you know.
So that, that's, that's why y'all are sitting on council, to look at these real numbers.
And try to make a change.
There's nothing being hidden up here, what, what y'all need to make decision is, how much work y'all wanna get done and how much of a priority is it? So you believe, uh, for instance, that we need more people, if that's the consensus of everybody else, then we get more people. My consent, my, yes, I need more people, but I'm already concerned that I can't keep the people that I already have.
Right.
That's my number one concern, if I can address number one, then my quick number two is, hey, we do need more people if you want to get the amount of work that you're expecting or the citizens are expecting, they're expecting, everybody says, there, everybody has the belief that their street is the worst, there needs to be next on the list. For us to spread five people across two hundred plus streets across this entire city and maintain the ones we got and expect to, yes, we're asking for failure, we're, there's no way we can eat this fast enough.
To you is, are we gonna ask? To you is, are, are we gonna ask every year for an increase?
Yes, absolutely, cause every year, every year, everything goes up. Last year, y'all gave us the no new revenue rate, Mr.
Yeah.
You pushed for it, and as a taxpayer.
Ain't too many businesses coming down.
As a taxpayer, I believe that is something that we always need to consider, one hundred percent.
Gonna raise my taxes, gonna raise my taxes, but it's nothing, no money coming in here, man.
Agreed. What we need is.
There's a few jobs down here, a few people that got businesses down here that's doing real well.
Yep.
But, so, somebody ride around here that got businesses that, that's hard to maintain, and then you come through here and you see nothing but the city, hospital, police station, all that stuff is grown. How you think that, how you think that make them?
I, I agree a hundred percent.
But see, you look at stuff one way, you gotta look at stuff everybody way.
That's why, from, from my perspective.
I love to see people getting paid, but we gotta look at the whole town, man.
From my perspective, our number one, our number one priority is on bringing in new businesses, new values, new jobs.
I'm with you.
That's what we need to be prioritizing on. So, while we're pushing that, we still have an entire city that needs to be addressed.
I'm with you on that.
So, for those struggling businesses, they're still parked, their, their address is on a street that probably needs to be addressed.
But you gonna raise their taxes so you can get paid more.
No.
I'm, that's, that's, I'm with everything.
It's also, it, it's also just like Gerald said a few moments, it's a double, double edged sword, I mean, as, we're sitting here talking this and, and I agree, but at the same time, somebody was talking about scrolling earlier. These people who, who have the, who have the experience and, and, and qualified, and they, and, and, and maybe, maybe they're, they're hurting too.
Right.
They need, they need some more money, but when they find that job, when they're scrolling, they're gonna go and they're gonna inquire about it, and next thing you know, they're gonna be packing up, and they're gonna be moving and, 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 and they're gonna be somewhere else, and then you're gonna have to start all over again with somebody.
Oh, I, I totally understand, but.
But, but, so, so, the, the challenge is, is keep these
The people we got.
Wonderful qualified people that we have, uh, you know, and the way that you're gonna keep them is you're gonna have to give them.
More.
You know, more, a, and at the same time, we gotta have new, but at the same time, we gotta try the best that we can in representing all our constituency, and try to keep the taxes low, but you, we just, we just can't always do everything.
You can't, and I understand that, but I want you to understand where I'm coming from also.
Oh, I do, because I'm, I'm a taxpayer myself, I don't like to see, but I understand, uh, you know, you gotta pay, you gotta pay to play.
Yeah.
And, and what we did last year, what we did last year is, we did not apply it as a percentage, because, w- once again, if we're trying to address entry level pay, when we're trying to address recruiting and bringing in good qualified people, the ones that we're seeing the overturn are on the lower end of the pay scale, the entry level folk. That's why we did not do it based on a percentage. We did it on a fixed rate, because when you do it based on a percentage, if you make more and you get a percentage of that salary, you make more, you, you ended up getting a bigger raise than those on the lower end of the scale.
Right.
And so, that's why we did not do it based on a percentage, to try to address the people on the bottom end of the scale, you know, more. And, and so, whether it be that, whether council says, let's look at, let's find a meet, a medium ground, let's, let's address our entry level pay and give bigger colas on, on that end of the, of the scale, the ones that were, the one, the ones that we're seeing turnover, the ones that we're trying to train up and become the next supervisors and try to, you know, let's address those. I'm open, those, we, we have to, I have to bring it to your attention, otherwise I would not be doing the city a service.
We just, I think that we really need to, like, to get together and really discuss and come up with a plan.
Apparently so.
To try to retain, uh, because I look back at, at the state of Texas, they didn't give a raise every year. I mean, it was, they gave a, a, you, we, they said we got a raise, I mean, we got a raise, but it was not yearly. So, that's what I'm done, I'm comparing it, I'm like.
Salaries to cities though.
Excuse me?
Compare the state of Texas salary to the city, and, and the benefits.
What I knew now.
And the benefits.
I'd work for the city.
Yeah.
I, I'd apply for the city.
With no, with, with no insurance, we don't get insurance upon retirement, there's all the benefits that come with working for the state that are, that come with retention built in, that you don't wanna leave the state once you start working for the state.
But I would have.
And we don't take benefit of that.
Don't get me wrong, I would love to see the, cause I know it's Mr. Gerald and them, and I stay beside the city worker, I see him on call twenty-four seven. I would love to get him extra money, man.
So, you, you, but you made a point, and I'm gonna finish it up with that. As we move forward with this, I'm telling you that we really need to consider, in order to retain the people that we have, we really need to consider some type of a cost of living. I'm not dictating what it should be or how it should look. When you're talking about top heavy people, I want you to meet with me and highlight, highlight those people so I can give you job descriptions and show whatever, all I can do is talk for myself right now.
Well, yeah.
Since I've been here, since I've been here, please, please look at me like, it's good. So, since I've been here, I have not taken any pay increases. Since I've been here, I've done nothing but take on more work and more work on my plate. Since I've, in, in, in this last year, uh, my, my, my job load, load has doubled. Now I have to do an, an entire different department, and y'all gave me nothing for that, and I willingly take it on and successfully try to do my best at that job as well, and, and, and economic development and business development and doing what I can to try to keep this city moving forward, and I've never come back complaining to you. And I never, you never, you'll never hear me complaining, cause if, if I don't feel happy or I don't feel like I'm doing my job, then you'll be looking, I'll let you know, hey, I need to bow out, you need to find somebody else. But as long as I can successfully do my job, you're not gonna hear me complaining, and I know all of my supervisors that are under me from, from Mr. Gerald, from Mr. Stanley, from, uh, City Secretary, from Ms. Selena, none of us are in here, we're here fighting for our people, we're here fighting for our people, that's why they're here today. They're not fighting for themselves, they're fighting for their people because they know what they're up against. And every one of us will put gloves on and go out there and work alongside those people. So, our, we are not top heavy when it comes to having too many chiefs and not enough Indians. If you're saying that you feel that those people are, are paid too much, then I would be more than happy to show you numbers, to show you co- uh, competitive rates, to show you our job descriptions, to know that you have no doubt in your mind that we're, we're underpaid as well, but we're doing it happily. We're happy to do it, cause that's why we're here. And so, as we move forward, any money that I can find in the budget, I'm more than willing to try to work with y'all and show y'all options to try to attract and retain the people that we consistently see that we're losing. Patrolmen, those are the ones that we're highest, we're losing the, the most, you know, the, the turnover. The guy, all of our operators, our CDL drivers and operators, those are the ones that we're losing the most. And that's why we're bringing those numbers to you, those are the ones that we need to retain. We can talk about more people, but I gotta retain our quality employees first, and, and, and keep them. As soon as we train them, we need to be able to keep those people. And so, I'll continue coming back throughout this budget workshop, and we can talk about that, how y'all want it to look. Um, I know we're running out, a little bit out of time, so, I wanna plug through a few more of these, but I wanted that to be the first one, cause that isn't, you know, the number one that comes, will come back every year.
And I, and I understand that. And I understand that, that's why I would say, being that, I've been telling me it's the way it is now, um, and we don't, of course, we don't know, um, we have a lot of issues going on, and so, I would look at, me personally, I would look at doing, because we just did a cola raise, I would look at doing, uh, looking at it on the next budget year. Uh, that's what I, I can say, cause I'm, I'm looking at, you know, possibly if we could hire staff, because we'll never hire staff if we continue, cause I think you gave the same spiel on last year for the raises, and I, I got it. I understand you fighting for.
Let's move on.
For the people, I'm talking.
We need to move on, no.
No, but I'm, this, we in discussion, but anyway, uh, I can understand you fighting for your people, I, I got it, for, for the, for our people, I got that. I understand that, but we also have to look at what's, what the residents are looking at as well.
A hundred percent.
Because they're expecting out of us what, what, uh, what their tax money is, is, uh, paid for.
What our tax money.
Yeah, exactly, and they're paying for this, so, we need to respond, they elected us to, to speak on that behalf, and that's what we need to do, we need to stand up for tho- uh, those tax, uh, taxpayers.
Yep.
So.
I agree a hundred percent.
So, in that, saying that, I, I would suggest that we look at, um, looking at the, uh, cola race on, on the next budget, and that's just me.
Alright. So, um, here's a few, here's a few items that we need to be looking at, and I'll gladly meet with y'all and, and we can look at these more, um, one on one, and with a few of y'all I have when I've been able to meet with you. Um, something that we continue to get a complaint about is, um, here in the council chambers, um, the, the sound and the acoustics are, are, are bad. As soon as I raise the level of these, um, the speaker systems and the, the volume in here, the echo creates such a feedback that I really, I would, I would like to see some carpet and some, some acoustics addressed in here, since, ever since we went from carpet flooring, what, since we went from carpet flooring to this, uh, and it's really good, hard, you know, durable flooring, but it's not set for a system where we record in, when we record and when we, uh, have, uh, speakers, uh, you know, microphones and stuff like that. So, that, we've done from this point to the other end of the building, we fixed all the cracks in the, in the nicks and dings in the walls, and we painted them. I want to finish this, get some, these chairs right here, I've put several screw, that, they're being held together, I've, I fix these chairs regularly because the, the, they're falling apart. Get some nice chairs for the audience to where we're nice, really respectable, presentable, um, audience chairs here. Carpet flooring to help on the acoustics, and to finish painting this, the, the, the city hall and the other offices. The lobby out front has big cracks in it, um, dings in the walls, it hasn't been, you know, painted since the eighties probably. Um, actually, it was painted once before, but it was done by some community service, so, we really need to, you know, clean our office up to where it looks nice here at city hall. Um, and I have that, the dollar amount there, that's just a budgeted, uh, a dollar amount that I put in there for twenty-five thousand nine hundred. That's for painting all of city hall, putting flooring, uh, carpet flooring and changing out our chairs in our council room. The Ag Arena requires toilets and bathroom fixtures, the faucets and the, and the toilets at the Ag Arena are in really bad shape. I've got some quotes just on dollar for replacing the fixtures and the plumbing, um, uh, for twenty-one thousand dollars for all of those, those have to be changed out to ADA toilets and, uh, uh, sinks.
I have a question about that, so who's actually responsible for the, uh, Ag Arena?
Ultimately, the city, yes ma'am. I mean, the city's responsible, we have the.
Repairs?
Ma'am?
The city's responsible for repairs and.
We own it, we own it, um, the Lions Club does some management out there, but there's not a lot of money for investment for repairs and stuff like that on the, on the Lions Club, um.
So, what, what I'm saying on that though, so, with that being said, um, I mean, and you're saying restrooms, so that twenty-one thousand, and I see that in our Capitol outlay that you gave us, it does not include a swimming pool. So, would we be able to address the swimming pool at any time?
If we get the grant.
So, uh, we can't, but we can, um, designate monies toward.
It already has been, based on that grant, so, we don't have any funding coming from tax revenue or, you know, city budget for the swimming pool, but if we get that grant, then I'll come to you with a grant project.
Okay, so, in other words, we won't be able, but we can't apply, uh, any of these funds towards swimming pool?
No ma'am. Well, I mean, yeah, we, we, we can, but that's, so, right now we have a deficit of about seven hundred and fifty thousand, so if y'all, I mean, all of the, these are current fixtures, and the, these are facilities that we own, the Ag Arena, the Civic Center, the ci- city hall, these are the ones that I'm bringing back to you, just to keep our investment, these are, these are the only things that we have, the best things that we have to present to the public, that the public access to the Civic Center where we have lots of people and, and outside, you know, customers coming in. I feel like we need to keep those up, those are big, huge investments that we made back in the day, and those are the only things, some of the only things going for us as a city. So, we need to prioritize maintaining them and making them look presentable, so, um.
The money they pay, like, when they rent a civic center, do they come back to the city?
Yes, and I have that in the budget, and I'll show you, that, that helps fund the civ- right now the civic center uh, budget is around a hundred thousand, and our revenue for the civic center is about fifty. So, it helps cover a lot of the costs of the civic center.
So, you, so you've already applied for the grant, for the swimming pool?
Yes, and y'all approved it, y'all approved it in March or April.
So, but if things change and we decide to do different, we can?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm looking here, I'm looking at, I'm gonna let you go ahead.
I'm just trying to get through these before, ma'am, cause we're fixing to lose one of our council members. Um, security. Yes, we do, yes ma'am, I'm just letting you know, uh, we, we need to install, uh, well, the security, uh, camera systems at the fire station and civic center, those are our two main facilities that currently are not covered by on and off of, you know, premise, uh, uh, security systems.
So, that's, I was, uh, and that's what my question was on that, is could we use that money towards the swimming pool? Because it's not necessarily that we have to have a security system set up just at the present time, correct? How long has it been without?
It's, 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 it's an over, it's a, it's an, it's an ever occurring liability. Every year that we go on without security, uh, systems, um, it's a liability to the city. It's not a requirement, there's a lot of stuff that's not a requirement, those are recommendations in order to increase our security to know who's coming in and coming out, if they're leaving with, with stuff, if they, if they've broken into the civic center, they've damaged anything, we have some amount of accountability for our fire station and, and, um, civic center.
Yeah, so, I'm actually asking, now, I got, I mean, like I say, all your Capitol requests, but, um, the, uh, council didn't submit anything, so that's why I was asking about the swimming pool, so, keep going, I'm sorry, keep going.
Um, repairing and painting the civic center, the, the civic center is in bad need of repairs and to the walls, molding, the trim, the tr- the trim is falling off, we have lots of stained, uh, ceiling tiles. Uh, in the bathrooms, the tiles are all, they're, they're really embarrassing looking. I'd love to see, just pop those out and buff those concrete floors like we did at the Provalis Building to where they're more durable and, and it has a better finish. That, painting, uh, repainting and, and fixing up our civic center auditorium lobby, conference rooms, even our conference rooms, who were built in the, in the, what, two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, they, they, we need to maintain them and make them look presentable, cause that's where, that's the, kind of the face of our city. And I'd really like, um, council to, um, entertain that. Um, I would like to replace, so, currently with the transition of our fire marshal to the community development office, not just working over as, just a specific fire marshal office, now that role has taken on a lot more. That role does also not require a, 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 a big diesel pickup that he currently drives, the fire marshal. Um, and now, ful- fulfilling the role as assistant city manager, it's a lot of more travel, meetings, meeting with people and stuff, but not necessarily the need for a truck. What we'd like to do is transition the fire chief's truck currently, the gray one ton pickup to the pu- to the public works department, so we have a one ton pickup to pull our equipment, our excavators, our bulldozer, that we have, we have, that we have something big enough to pull the, our big pieces of equipment with a one ton diesel. Uh, transition the fire marshal assistant city manager's black truck, the diesel, to the fire department, to where they still have a truck to pull their air trailer and use for fire service, cause it's already equipped with lights and everything else, and just get a used vehicle, a used pickup or a used SUV or a car or something like that. So, we, instead of buying a, another truck for public works, we found a way to transition two trucks that we currently have and use something else that's not requiring a diesel, big three quarter ton pickup, so I'd like to, if we can find some funds to purchase a used, um, vehicle for running around and not for, uh, not running around with a big diesel pickup.
So, we don't have any, we don't have a vehicle available, the city doesn't?
Not currently, not currently, if, it, what we've been doing with the police department as, as they transition and bring new vehicles in for non-emergency services, we want lower mileage, better vehicles for the emergency services, but we've been transitioning, like, I, I drive that truck, I, the Tahoe I've been driving for about five years now was a hand me down from the police department, so we've been transferring those vehicles into the city, but right now, with not purchasing any more, if y'all do find funds for purchasing a police vehicle, uh, uh, you know, a new police vehicle, we could probably use one of those, but right now I don't have one. Um, the last thing, or the last couple of things, two things.
Is that a, is that a need, I mean, is that a?
It's, no, it's not, it, it's one of those, it's a, it's a, it's a benefit and a need that impacts three departments. It's a, it's a, it's a benefit and a need that impacts three departments. Um, it helps the public works for the most part, because they're the ones that would benefit the greatest, because they get a new vehicle, a truck. That can pull the bulldozers, excavators, our big truck, because we don't have a big one-ton truck. Um, to pull those, you know, the our big pieces of equipment around. So the public works benefits, the fire department is not hurt at all, because the truck that they lose, they would gain the fire marshal slash assistant city manager's truck. Because he doesn't require a diesel, that, you know, a big pickup.
Well, you're just not getting the maximum benefit of that tr- truck right now, yes.
Um.
So it's not a need?
Yeah, they're all needs, is it, is a really, is it a really, really need?
Yeah, it's a priority, yeah.
So, um, purchase a pad foot steel roller. Um, this is one that keeps on coming up probably as our number one priority each year. We've found and maximize ways that we go in and do reconstruction on our roads. We have the rollers, we have mixers, the motor grader, the stuff that we, there's some things that soon will need to be replaced, but the one item that we don't have. Is a pad foot roller to compact our roads better. Um, and I have even a picture in there to show, so as we mix that road down, we go down about twelve inches, pull all that material back. We bring in Portland cement and we mix it together and we bring it in layers. Our current rollers are smooth, they're finished rollers, and so we're not able to compact that base and build good, strong roads like we should be. Um. I found, those are new, those new are close to two hundred thousand, I found several of them going off of uh, uh, United rentals or uh, cat rentals. That, you know, three, two thousand, three thousand hours on them, still five, six years old. And you get, and they've had good maintenance on them, and so I would like to. That dollar amount is somewhere between fifty to seventy thousand is what we're seeing some good used rollers uh, going on to.
Are we gonna, are we gonna be able to do more rows with this?
No, we will be able to do current roads better. Some of the roads that we've been doing, we've been doing with either the rubber tire roller or our smooth drum roller, and it only hits the high sides, it hits. It's not getting down there and compacting the base like it should be.
Also, also about purchasing, purchasing this roller, it won't, it won't be as labor intense. Because with the roads we have down, we have to put them in li- in lifts, by four-inch lifts, in order to try to get the compaction. You have to put in about four-inch lifts, which takes longer to do it. The last time when we done Wilson and Heatham, we started that morning, they started mixing at about eight-thirty in the morning. We didn't get off those streets tonight at night, because we were trying to do it correctly, put in our lifts. And sure that we get a quality finished product. This particular roller, you won't have to put it into so many lifts, because if you, if you look at it, it's got the little long hole at the pad foot. That's made for the compaction, so that you get the density that you need on the, on the, on the strip. Um. When you got Emerson, Emerson Street is probably eight years old, and you just not start to see if your puddles hit. And it was because we use a sheath foot roller, we had access to one then, and we used it to put the roller in.
It needs a chip, Emerson, all it needs is a good chip seal again to get another five, eight years out of it, but that base is solid as you you could ever want, um.
I'm worried about that over there.
Yeah.
You know, it's getting holes in it and then.
Which one?
Over on the.
Village Way?
So we really, we really, you really need this, huh?
We need the asphalt on that one. Village Way, we're good on that one too, we we did that one in good lift.
When we come back with the.
Because that just has a, it has a prep chip seal on it, that wasn't a finished product, so we just did the base on that one. Village Way still is gonna get a couple inches of asphalt over it.
Right, well, I'm saying it's already getting holes in it.
But we need to get over there and.
But but that's part of the process, when we got Village Way, it was with rubber tire roller and a slick drum, because that's all we had to work.
Yeah.
I'm just afraid we're gonna lose it since we, it's been so long.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get over there quick, we promise, that's, but that five people.
I know, no problem, I'm not saying that, no, not at all.
So that's part of our problem, especially with the rain and stuff and just trying to maximize our other projects, but yeah, we'll be back.
With that being said, on on four streets, we need some Village Way, on uh, streets for us, um, considering what Darius, Ralph Bunch. Uh, Redding, so when will I be, when will we start looking at, um, looking at those locations?
That'll be in this budget workshop, that'll be done while we prepare our budget this year. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um.
Another question real quick, uh, okay, um, so the the road on. On Bayou Street, the what, can you tell me, inform me of what happened there?
Well.
Or what's going on there?
What happened was a base failure. Part of what we're concerned about, like when we're doing the streets that we're doing without the proper equipment, these are contractors that do it with the proper equipment, and there's still. Things that happen, um, whether not enough, whether not enough, uh, you know, uh, material was put in. Whether it was done during a rainy season, all of those factors contribute to base failures. So our contractors, while they're doing this work, they're also, you know, under some requirements and warranties that. If the base fails and is not done properly, they're coming back to fix it, if we do the roads ourselves. We don't have anybody to blame but ourselves, so we go back out there and do it ourselves and fix it, um. Luckily, these roads, there's several of them, and a lot of it is the struggle of time. Getting done fast enough in the middle of bad rainy, like historical type rains. And then trying to fix it in between two or three days of no rain, and it probably should have waited longer to dry out better, to be mixed in better, so. It's just juggling that with our contractors and some of them, the timing and the rain hitting them in the middle of a project. So they're going back and fixing those roads.
So would it benefit us or, I mean, far as, because these are change orders, right?
No, this is, this is under, they did a job to meet certain specifications, and so they have to continue coming back and making sure it's right.
Okay.
Want to, to get paid, it's under, yeah, so it's not under, uh, they're not charging us more for any of that work.
Okay, okay, so, um, so with with that being said, would it be beneficial for us to, uh, before we do, like, just say, um. Darius and Ralph Bunch and that, would it be beneficial for us to get an engineer to come in and look at that road to?
No, ma'am.
Not, 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 not really.
Not really? Okay.
Because when you, whatever you do, whatever you do, uh, base work, is 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 basically gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the same thing. Procedure's gonna be the same.
Okay.
How you're supposed to do it is all procedurally same. So I thought we'd be fine with the way we've been doing it, we just need this piece of equipment to ensure that we get the compaction.
No.
Once we incorporate this thing in, because if you. A a lower, a track road segment, so it costs you six thousand dollars. So if you go into corporate, two low, just twelve thousand dollars you have to have. And so we just want to make sure that we doing everything systematically correct when we put it, when we put our roads in.
Um, so, and the last one is on our utility side, one of our biggest needs currently with the current infrastructure that we have. Is our wastewater, uh, our lift station at uh, South Nineteen, across from the fireworks stand outside the loop. Um, is where we have our uh, lift station, that lift station has, is, is failing. Um, it has dirt bottoms, the way it was built was not built with concrete bottoms, so it's starting to fail and the sides are dropping down. The pumps are old, our our pumping pipes, the pipes that pull the, the uh, the lift station and make up that lift station, all of that's old. We rebuilt, two years ago, we rebuilt our Nottingham Woods Lift Station, and I'd like to do the same at this one, because it's out of, it's out of time. It's it's falling apart, all the the system out there is old, so all this we would do in-house, we just need the money for the work. Or for the, for the equipment ourselves and we can install with, it's just the pumps, the pumps cost money. And um, the piping and everything like that, but we would sub it out and not have to hire, because we're just doing it back like it was engineered, so we don't have to hire engineers and contractors for it. Um, alright. And that's it. For now. That gives uh, council an idea of some of our bigger, a lot of the smaller stuff, things that we're not expecting big changes on. Um, um, insurance, we haven't got all of our numbers back on property and uh, and liability insurances, but. Um, health insurance, we're projecting um, a flat, with no increase on that, we, we went out to bid this past, what, two, three months ago? Got our insurance rates in, everything looks good, uh, moving forward into our next year, so not, not projecting any big increases there. Um, so. Other than some small stuff that comes up, these are our bigger, either one-time needs or appropriational needs, and so. Thank y'all, is there any? Any questions or direction for us?
When will we revisit this?
Probably at our next council meeting, our next regular scheduled council meeting will be the third Monday. And if we have some follow-up items as we're moving forward, we get better, different, number, some of the direction that council, recommendations that council's already provided. I'll meet with the department heads and if there's other follow-up information that we can bring back to council. And hopefully by then I'll also get better information to start giving y'all revenue and expenditure projections. Uh, once we get better numbers from the appraisal district on that. Um. So our next council meeting will be the third Monday, and we'll do that at the regular ti- at at our regular, regular time.
So, um, also, what was your, um, what is a financial report for the, um.
I'm working with the book.
Economic development?
I'm working with the bookkeeper on on that to where I can show, because right now I have the budget or our profit and loss, so I can show you the profit and loss. But once again, we're using a previous budget that did not have, did not um, address any of the things that the wind down resolution addresses, all the current obligations it. So in that, I'll bring back to council another, a a budget amendment to change the current budget to what the. Wind down resolution dictates over the next few years, and each year we'll just update that, and I'll bring it back to council for a, for an annual budget. Here's the ongoing obligations, here's what's left to pay, here's what's left to pay on this, here's the revenue line items. And that way, every bit of additional revenue that we get that doesn't meet obligations goes straight into debt payoff, paying down that debt.
We'll be able to change the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Even though, unless after it was.
We'll have to, we have several more years' worth of obligations to meet, so council by their wind, wind down resolution is going to manage that wind down.
You got a question, John? Motion to the nurse?
Motion with her.
Second?
Second. Third.
So, we see, if we get a five percent colas, we get two dollars and fifty cents. Raise.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
I don't know. They got us making hard to go out and party.
Hey, we didn't get the two percent.
Twenty-six dollars, I didn't know. Ask him, get it, get it, man, get it, man.
You're cussing, you're cussing at yourself.
Instead of calling, like, I'm the, I'm the president.
You hear me, uh?
I don't know, I just say that all the time, man.
Wayne, we need to look and give the council a raise.
Yeah, it was just forty-six dollars.